I'd like to open a public hearing on the, for the purpose of receiving public comment for the sale of certain real estate, which is Five Hill Court. Is there anyone who would like to testify at this public hearing? I don't see anyone who would like to testify, so I will close the hearing. Okay, the next meeting is the Urbana City Council meeting, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here, go Cardinals.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
First item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have two, August 17th and August 31st, which was a special meeting.
Move approval?
And I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any additions or corrections to either one of those sets of minutes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Diane?
I have a possible deletion. Item C, under Committee of the Whole, we delayed consideration of the transportation company, transportation network company services till later this month.
Okay. That's right. Good call. Yes, Mike?
There was a request from Joe Hooker. Either he or another attorney may show up. They're at the county board right now, and they're gonna try and be here by like about 8:15. If we could delay consideration of Resolution Number 21508-047R until they get here, it would be appreciated.
Anyone else? Is that okay with the, with the committee? Or with the council, rather? Okay, we'll move on to petitions and communications. Steve Carter, would you like to speak now?
Wait and do it.
You wanna do it later? Okay. All right. Mother Mary Brooks.
Sure. Glad to be here. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here in regards to, who knows, the rezoning for the halfway house, I guess that's what it's called, on Matthews. And I'd just like to state my opposing. First of all, I would like to thank the police, the men's in blue, for all of the things that they done when we had little Beirut on Beslan and the north side of Urbana. They did their job. They really did their job. And there was, I want to publicly thank them because there was a lot of abuse heaped upon the police that they shouldn't have had to face. And I realize it's because the training that they had, they were able to handle certain situations. I've seen more guns and faced more guns in the last six months than I have when I was in, on the farm shooting rabbits. And if you have to live like that, it's not a good thing. We can sit back and speculate about how it feel, but when bullets are sailing by your head, you, you don't know what you're gonna think and don't know what you're gonna do. So I'm gonna thank them. Because I was a victim. I was a victim because they shot in my home, and I'm the one who had to pay the bill and didn't cause any problems. I've seen things that I've never seen in my 78 years. The disrespect, the name-calling, the profanity. So I have to say, they have great, great training. They have the type of training that some of the people in our community needs, and I don't know why we're not giving it to them. We giving them everything else. I oppose to the rezoning of zoning from R2 to R4, medium-density, family residential district. Fifty years ago, I moved to this community. It was a single-family home where I raised my children, my husband and I. It was good enough for us then, and it's good enough for us now. We moved there when blacks could not move anywhere but, and I'm not making this a black thing, I'm just giving you the history. Between University, Bradley, Wright Street, and Matthews was the only place we could go. You went on the other side of Ellis, and the Ellis was only cornfields. So we was not even able to look in our home. We bought it without looking inside of it. And this is America. But we took it and we did what we could with it, and...
You have one minute.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Anyway, I wanna say, I have more than a minute, but I'm gonna say, I'm gonna be obedient. We paid tax.
I'll move for more time. Yeah. Second.
I agree with that.
We paid our tax on time. We supported Urbana. I am not against women's. I'm a woman myself. I raise nine children. I work every day. I'm not against any woman, but I'm telling you this, as a person who worked in community outreach for 39 years, in every facet that you can think about, you cannot rehabilitate anyone unless they wanna be a rehabilitate themselves. So we can give them everything. I would've loved to have one of the new houses, but I wasn't able to have one. So I made mine new. This, in, in reality, this area should be a historical community because of the longevity that we have had in this community. And, and we had business, laundry that was built up by the Sheltons, and we had hollows, but we never got anything that the other communities got. We didn't get a, a senior home. Instead of getting a senior home when Donby Court was towed out, we got that home, those houses down there on the corner of Eads and, and Wright Street that causes all, a lot of problems, a lot of problems. You can't even walk down there. I feel bad for my grandchildren going to Washington School over in Champaign because they shoot over there. We need to rehab, rehabilitate from University to Bradley, rather than try to put something else new in. Because we dealing with, working with people who don't have things. One of the things I'm gonna say, and I'm going to get on, we all make choices. And for every negative behavior, there is accountability for it. And everybody need to learn that. Everyone needs to learn that. Political correctness is on its way out in America, because it has killed us. Because in, in reality, what we did was, we left behind right and wrong. And right and wrong shall always be in, no matter what anybody say. We need to teach that to our children, and so they won't be doing the things that they're doing now. They need to learn respect. And it's gonna have to come from the people in the community as well. The police can't teach them no respect, because they hate the police, most of them do. I'm just gonna tell you straight out, there's no great respect, just 'cause I like them, you know? I like the uniform. I was taught that you respect that uniform. I may not like him, I may even tell him I don't like him. But I am going to respect that uniform because I value the laws in the United States of America. We can't continue to be corrupting what we have. It's time for us to build. I already said that, so we must get back to our ethics. Where's the ethics at? I'd like to see a little ethics in people. We had enough of picking up behind others who, who say, who make excuses. We a whole country of making excuses, and Urbana, we make too many excuses for bad behavior. There's no way that we should be making, picking up behind them when they make their choices. And I read the bio that they had. It says, "What would Jesus do?" They ax in that bio, and I'm not trying to preach to you, but I'm just gonna say one thing for sure. They said, "If they steal, if they lie, that they will go on and do whatever they have to do." But I'm gonna tell you what Jesus say. Thou shall not steal. I reads, "Thou shall not steal, thou shall not kill, thou shall not lie, and you supposed to obey the laws of the land." So I'm gonna say, the landlords need to be held, and all of this involved, be held responsible for what they do in the north side of, of Urbana. If you notice, I'm not saying the north end like people say, because I learned a long time ago. It's the north side of town. You don't say the dead end of south side, you don't say the dead end of the east side, but when you get to the northwest side, people call it the north end. No, it's the north side of town, and as aldermen, you all are gonna have to deal with it, one way or another. I'm gonna ask this question. I'm gonna say, should the disadvantage be, the disadvantage should not be placed on the back of the poor? And we are a poor area, the hard-working people. We got some people we'd like to get rid of, you can have them over on your side of town. But last but not least, I'd like to say, that was something that offended me greatly here, when the man said that he bought a house that was an irrepute. I won't say what he said. House of irrepute, and he did it to save us. Well, I got news for you. We're not prostitutes, and he haven't saved us from anything. And I am very, I'm not upset with you, because you don't know what people gonna say when they get up here, but I am upset with him. He had no right. We, whatever you say about one African-American, usually we all have to leave about it. And I know, I'm a lady. I've been over there 50-something years, and I've never seen a house of irrepute. I've seen other things over there, but I haven't seen that. So I don't know where he learned it from, maybe he was there, I don't know. But anyway, John Kennedy said, "Think not what your country can do for you, but think what you can do for your country." And I have lived by that ever since John Kennedy ran and won, and I taught my children that. Think what you can do for others. You gonna get a job. If you are not going to school, you gonna get a job. I, I could've been out and been in a woman's place, but I said I wasn't. I scrub floors the state way. I went to college, I got my degree, I raised my children, I put them through school. Martin Luther King said, "Nonviolence is the way." And I believe that, and I shall always believe it. If they wanna shoot and fight, the police can't do anything but arrest them and take them to court, and they, and they be back home before I can get my night clothes on to go to bed, but, and that's what happens. The police can't do anything but arrest them and do their job. Somehow, we gonna have to figure out what we going to do. If you just pat them on the shoulder and pat them on the hand, they're never gonna do any better. But they, they need to learn that they have responsibilities to build for themselves. I build my life, and I wanna keep it like it is. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It's on the consent decree, and as you know, this is being debated before 14 different public bodies. This has been going on for quite a while, so you guys aren't present for all the debates and all the things that have been going on, so I kinda wanna bring you up to speed of where we're at today. One of the problems is, is the Mohammed Aquifer sole-source designation is being misrepresented. We've found out that the Illinois regulations that are in place will not allow a landfill to be permitted above the Mohammed Aquifer under any circumstances. So currently, saying that a siding may go back to Duick County, it's a 100% impossibility. It cannot go back to them. In the federal petition for the Mohammed Aquifer, there was a responsive summary given by the federal government that identifies what the Mohammed Aquifer is. I'd like to read it to you. It says, "reviewed by the EPA shows that the inconsistencies between the aquifer zones and the Glassford Formation and the Mohammed Aquifer are highly variable and localized. The three-dimensional modeling performed by the Illinois State Geological Survey supports the existence of these interconnections. According to the Illinois State Geological Survey, the Glassford Formation in particular contains discontinuous deposits of sand and gravel forming an aquifer zone. Even though the Illinois State Geological Survey understand, understanding of these interconnections is evolving, and this evolution may not have been fully captured in the groundwater flow model presented in Roadcap at 211, the EPA believes that it is appropriate to designate the Mohammed Aquifer system, including the overlying aquifer zones such as those in the Glassford Formation, as an SSA." Joe Hooker today at the Water Authority meeting referred to a state law that's in place. It says, "No part of a unit may be located within the recharge zone or within 366 meters, 1,200 feet, vertically or horizontally of a sole-source aquifer designated by the United States Environmental Protection Agency." Unless there is a stratum between the bottom of the waste disposal unit and the top of the aquifer that meets the following requirements," and that's plural, and there's four of them. There has to be 50 feet. Currently, Clinton Landfill is inside of the aquifer itself. They may be grandfathered in for their municipal solid waste unit, but they can never expand the facility or go back to the Illinois EPA or Duick County Board for a siding. It would be in violation of state law. Duick County is, or, Clinton Landfill is well aware of this fact. This is the reason this consent decree is before you right now. The only chance that Clinton Landfill has to keep the chemical waste unit is to get you to do it. That is what's before you tonight. The other questions that came up at Salvoys, since we're debating this thing by bouncing around from the 14 government bodies, their attorney is really upset over the concept that once you enter into a consent decree, if there's a problem with this waste that you're allowing to be left inside of this landfill, you may actually be financially responsible to do the cleanup with Clinton Landfill. They've got themselves in a consent decree right now that they're fighting this fight. The other problem that Water Authority had is this agreement will lead to more litigation. Do you, if you wanna enforce this or do anything with it, you've gotta go back to court again. All these cases will reach the same plateau that you're at right now. Clinton Landfill's business is law. They will go right in, they, they sue people, it's just a daily part of their business. Brian McGuinness shows right up at a meeting and says, "I'm gonna sue you." That's the first thing he says, because he knows that he's gonna scare most people when he does it. And they carry it out. They sued the Sierra Club for them actually foying information, and they caused them to actually supply all the documents that they had in Peoria when they attempted to get the hazardous waste landfill there. The other question that's been coming up is this transfer station in Champaign. There's a question why money is going to be paid to Champaign from Clinton Landfill for all the waste in this region going to Champaign first before it goes to Clinton. This is something that Clinton Landfill does on a regular basis. They offer a little bit of money to somebody to support their landfill operation. Watch is in favor of, of money, I guarantee you, because there's a lot of money here, but we want this money to support businesses that are willing to recycle. I don't want one single penny to go to a landfill that's going to continue polluting our water. This process has to come to an end. The rest of the country has already accepted it. Our laws are in place in the state of Illinois. We're ready for it. The other question I've got is this...
Your time, your time expired when the little buzzer went off.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions?
Did you wanna give him more time?
Yeah, let's have three more minutes, maximum.
Okay.
I would like to have, I would ask that we do this in the form of questions. Like, I have a few questions that may be answered, so instead of you going on for another three minutes and then having to ask questions, if that's okay?
Yeah.
All right. So you mentioned siding. I don't know if everyone else understands. I certainly don't know what you mean by siding. And you talked about the sole-source designation and, and sightings. We heard testimony, I guess a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, that we need to sign this consent decree or support this consent decree because it would, if not, then the landfill could go back and ask for the ability, they could resubmit this application that they pooled. Are you saying that the, what you've just stated, the statute, what you read, says that they, they can't even apply for that? I just wanna make sure, to make that clear to us.
Yeah, let, let me kinda clarify what a siding is to begin with. In the United States, the EPA has a structure to where the federal government controlled RECA. They actually gave that authority to states, okay? During that process, states actually have created some of their own laws that may not, they mirror or meet the requirements of federal law. They can be more restrictive, but they can't be less restrictive. Illinois has passed a law that requires local siding. That means that this body right here, if somebody wanted to apply for a landfill within your jurisdiction, they would have to come and lay down a couple hundred thousand dollars in a form that would apply for you to consider, do all the engineering studies, have public hearings, go through a whole lengthy process, and then come to the conclusion whether or not you're gonna pass it, you would vote on it then. That's a siding. Other states, the governor may have it. State legislators have said the governor of the state may have it. So here, in Illinois, we have local sightings. Duick County is the one that's in charge of this siding because it's in their jurisdiction. It's outside of the municipalities. It's in the county directly. So the, the question here is, can, if, the first step is you go to a siding, then once you get a siding in place, then the applicant will go to the Illinois EPA and say, "Hey, I got a siding, I'm approved, here's my application." This is a very confusing process for a lot of people that are not involved in EPA regulatory processes. The landfill creates the application. They actually write it themselves. They, they will take that application to the Illinois EPA, and they'll review that, and if they don't like it, the Illinois EPA calls them up on the phone and says, "Paragraph 4, line 3, change this from it to that," you know? That is the process that's used. It refines that application. Once it's signed and that application's in process, the public is outside of the regulatory scheme. It is totally controlled by the agency 100%. So the only part that the public has any access to is the initial siding. What this law says is you can't even get a permit, so it would be a waste of time for Clinton Landfill to show up at a municipality or county board meeting and say, "Hey, I want a siding," because they already know it. There, there's no question in their mind that they know that if the fourth appellate court rules that a siding was required, they cannot run back and get the siding. Watch was well aware of this when we did the sole source.
So, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. When you say siding, are you saying that a person has to, or a group has to get a siding in order to get a landfill?
Yes.
Or, so, but there's already a landfill there?
Yes. The municipal landfill is already there, and it was created before the sole-source designation and the decision by the federal government that protects the Mohammed Aquifer.
So it's grandfathered in, basically?
It's grandfathered in.
Okay.
And so what occurred before 2007, it holds. I mean, I, we can sit here and we can cry about it, and do whatever we wanna do.
And so I wanted to get to that particular point, because my second question was in relationship to cleanup. So what's on the site right now? What you, what you cited as a sole-source designation?
Yes.
Does it require cleanup?
The process that we're in right now in court is a process that challenges the fact that the chemical waste unit should have never been built and required a siding. The waste should have never been put in there. In June of 2011, we flew over it with an airplane and discovered that there was a chemical waste unit that was constructed and had waste in it. There was a federal meeting that was going to occur within a week, public meeting. The federal government just about blew a cork. They could not believe that somebody had actually built the landfill and put waste inside of it. That's what tripped all of this, was the fact that Clinton Landfill was saying they weren't going to construct this, not until they had federal approval. They went ahead and constructed and began taking waste into the facility without even a permit. So...
So, I mean, I understand some of that part of it. I'm just trying to make sure, as, from a, if you know the answer to this, is that if you, sole-source designation, the fact that it was considered a sole-source designation, does that require a cleanup? In, in and of itself?
The, the, the waste does not belong, I can't require it, nobody can require it. You end up going into a courtroom, and a judge has to order them to remove the waste from there.
Okay.
That, that's where this is at still, as far as enforcement. The Illinois EPA has actually filed that they violated the law. They're actually trying to negotiate to leave the facility and the waste both there, is what this is for. And they're asking you to approve that agreement to leave the facility, because if they don't get the facility, they can't come back and apply for it later on. It's over with, once the sole source went into operation.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Spencer? Diane?
Can you state your background and your expertise in this?
The reason that I've, people, you know, I guess I've, I worked for Eastman Kodak and Sterling Drug. I was trained by the US federal government as a hazardous waste handler and was deployed in special cleanups in the United States and stuff. So my background goes quite a ways in for this type of stuff. I supervised, I was in the upper management area as far as decisions made that would affect, I guess, the direction the United States was gonna take in waste disposal.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
So, I'm inferring from what you said that you believe that if the consent... So, I'm inferring from what you said that you believe that if the consent decree, if we don't approve the consent decree, that the landfill will be forced to remove the waste that they put in there illegally, but if we do approve the consent decree, they will not be so forced?
Yes.
And, and by what mechanism, so, so there are two questions. By what mechanism do you believe that they will be forced to do that? And secondly, what is there in the consent decree that prevents that from happening? Because that would be an action that would be taken by the government, not by us.
It, it goes in reverse. It says in there that you guys are going to not require the waste to be removed. That's part of the agreement, that's the major. It says it right in the consent decree.
Yeah, we won't require it, but, but, but there's, there are other authorities that might require it, correct?
What a judge will do is he's going to look at what you say, because you're the elected official, and your word and your decision will carry the majority of weight in this before a judge. The first thing that Clinton Landfill will do is pull out this consent decree and they will say to the judge, "Your Honor, the Attorney General, the Illinois EPA, and 14 government bodies have said it's okay to leave this waste here. Why should Mr. Spencer or anyone else, the public, have a right to challenge that? What we're trying to do is we're trying to have an opportunity to clean this up. It's not a lot. There's, there's two factors involved in here. Cleaning it up is not a big thing. I can go around and collect the money from people, we all show up at the pickup trucks, we'll go get it done in 15 minutes. I mean, it's kind of a joke type of thing. The, even Joe Hooker says it's 1% of the, of the facility, I mean, of this 22.5 acres. The next question then is, there's patriciple waste and there's chemical waste. Chemical waste means it won't produce water out of its own means. This is dry somewhat waste or been solidified, and that type of waste is separate from municipal waste. MGP waste, you know, my first thought is, when I start thinking MGP waste, "Oh, that's just dirt, you know, it's just dirt." No, it's not dirt. If you took a shovel and scooped it up, it's coal tar mixed with sand, and it's full of benzene and tuleen and a bunch of other stuff. He's actually mixed this with hydrated lime, which is extremely dangerous. The Illinois EPA says they're afraid of this thing igniting. It reached 4,000 degrees in temperature hydrated lime well. Once you hydrate it, even if you get it wet and you dry it out and you play around with it, it's some very dangerous stuff to be messing with. This stuff is produced in a CCR, coal combustion residue, it's ran through the scrubbers. This process is used to remove all the heavy metals and stuff that are actually going into the atmosphere that we are trying to stop. That's the reason why this stuff, the coal ash by itself, just the burn off stuff, the bottom ash, that ain't nothing like, you know, this hydrated lime that's coming out of scrubbers. And he's collecting all that, millions of tons of it, and he's using it for solidification at this facility. We're having explosions that are shooting 1,000 feet into the air when they mix chemicals together that he's trying to solidify. Got pictures of it. He's trying to handle chemicals in a chemical waste unit. This is, this is an extremely dangerous process, you're mixing all these chemicals together and stuff.
So, what is the, how, how are this, how is this particular category of waste dealt with in other, other landfills and other parts of the country?
The way industry, the way industry deals with this is, there was a law passed in 1985, 84, that basically said no hazardous waste can go into a landfill unless it's no longer hazardous. So, we were required in industry to treat this waste. And they, we had a moratorium, a little window, to start complying with these regulations and preparing for this. Industry actually backed off in the United States producing these types of waste that are dangerous, because the cost was gonna go up higher and higher and higher. We've just got some people that are still hooked on to the old waste scheme that are wanting to find someplace to dispose it at a cheap price.
So, so we, so we somehow had some corporations nearby, I think in the Chicago area, who shipped untreated waste of this type to Clinton? Is that, is that what happened?
What Clinton Landfill was targeting was, there was a lot of money that was going to be used for the cleanup in the Chicago area. Chicago's groundwater contamination is at 100%. You can't take a cup of water out of the ground in Chicago. There was a guy that just got, I think he went to jail for it. He was a water guy that's supposed to be controlling the pumps and all the tests in the water plant. The water comes out of Lake Michigan, he was actually taking and going over pushing the start button on one of his old pumps and pumping water into the water tower, because he was running short on his numbers. So, to correct his numbers, that's what he was doing. That was, I mean, the people in Chicago about went through the ceiling over that. And he'd been doing this for years, so he'd been poisoning the people in Chicago for years, dumping that water in there. So, I mean, it's a serious thing, we're talking here, what you can contaminate with these types of chemicals.
I think you have a question from Bill Brown?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on what you said, the sole source aquifer designation, that it would prevent the Clinton Landfill, absolutely. And you, you mentioned the 50 feet and said that the Clinton Landfill was already within the aquifer, so according to what I was reading, the stratum underneath the landfill has to be 50 feet of a certain conductivity with, where water can't flow at a certain rate, and you're saying that doesn't exist?
Yeah, you, you would have to, you have to maintain all four of those categories. The 50-foot has to, and that stratum does both. So, what you would have to do is somehow float the landfill up and then put that 50 foot of that, that dense soil that can't have that transfer of hydraulics through it. So, that's impossible.
I thought the soil was already there. I thought it was 150 feet above the aquifer.
No, see, and that was, what happened was, is Clinton Landfill claimed in their federal application that there was 150 foot of clay under the landfill. Well, Roadcap was just like, blew his mind, "Well, that's 150 foot of the Glassford Formation." It's a white rock formation that's fractured, it's called glacier till. And 50% of the water that we actually pump out, for most people, we don't drill all the way down to the Mohammed Aquifer, the sand and river rock, we actually pump from the Glassford Formation. So, the head of the Mohammed Aquifer is actually up in the Glassford. It's actually past the Glassford into the Illinois and Wisconsin glacier formations, which are real thin compared to it. They're like this, and the Glassford formations like this, and then the Mohammed, I mean, it's still got another distance to it. So, the US EPA is saying, all of them. The only thing that's not part of the Glassford, or part of the Mohammed Aquifer sole source is the lus on top, where we plant corn at and beans. A very small, thin layer. Everything else is all part of it. It's actually recharger-y.
The Glassford isn't continuous, so there's lenses here and there, and it's, there's spots where it's solid and there's spots where it's not, so.
The way I always kind of look at it, and I, I do some drilling, but Roadcap does it all the time. If you go into a white rock quarry, and when I was a kid, I used to swim in them, you'd jump off the cliff and then you'd be down in there, and fish would come out and just bite you like crazy. There's all these fissures and cracks that are within the Glassford Formation, and all the fish go back into those cracks and come back out. Some areas have larger cracks, some have smaller cracks, and those are the ones that actually hold the volume of water. The other problem you run into, this stuff is not all consistent of that same glass, or that glacier formation, some of it's sand and gravel that's mixed in with it. Clinton Landfill, when they did their initial geological survey of the site, they found those sand lenses that were close to 50 or 60 feet deep into the Glassford Formation. And the hydraulic tests that they did show that you can pump water out of here and drop a well over here, you know, so fast. So, there was connection between the two of them. So, they had hydraulic conductivity. The other thing that's strange about this facility, he removed the Illinois and Wisconsin glacier formations totally. They're just wiped off the surface, and he's dug down to the Glassford Formation right on top of it. So, any soil that is actually something that would protect it, it's all been removed. There's nothing there, you're sitting right on this Glassford.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, some, I'm still trying to wrap my brain around, there are state, there's a state EPA regulations over aquifers, and then there's a federal regulation. I'm looking at the state exceptions here, but you're, could you send me or email all of us the federal EPA materials that you're referring to, please?
Yes, yes, I will, I will.
Oh, Dennis?
Well, it seems like, this, we're just taking public comment right now, and this has become like a serious, you know, issue with the public comment section, and I'm thinking that we're gonna probably want to have this kind of conversation in more in-depth when we have questions and answers during the regular conversation, so it's the likelihood of having this individual return for further discussion, because we just are supposed to be listening to five minutes.
I understand, I understand, I'm eating up your time, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Apologize for being so long, thank you.
Yes, I, oh, those are going around, that's a, I actually emailed that to you earlier today, but I thought you might want to have a copy sitting in front of you. What that is, is it's the contents of the chemical waste unit at the Clinton Landfill, the dates that the things were deposited, who they came from, and how many tons. I want to begin though by asking for an extension, because once you pass this and approve this, I don't think you can rescind it, can you? It's, it's something that if you vote to postpone it, you have a larger amount of time to consider things. And it's very important to the people who are my friends at the Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, because we've spent a lot of time, you know, thinking about having an educational effort for the public, and if you approved it tonight, you know, it's kind of putting the cart before the horse. It'd be nice to be educated, have the community have the ability to find out some things about the aquifer before the vote is actually taken. And some breaking news is that the Mohammed Valley Water Authority just today decided to postpone their vote until after our event, and Savoy did last week. So, there are now two units of government that, that have postponed it. And I'd also like to mention that there's five different units of government today that are having these deliberations, so we normally have more people here to ask for a postponement, but they're actually elsewhere at the time. Actually six, if you count the Mohammed Valley Water Authority, which was earlier this afternoon. Okay, now, I'd like to emphasize that the people that we're dealing with in terms of running Clinton Landfill, they're tricky people. They've tricked a lot of people already. They tricked Dewitt County into locating this in the first place, citing it, because it was a municipal landfill that later evolved into a chemical waste landfill without what some people would say a proper citing procedure. They've also tricked the people in Dewitt County about asbestos, promising that at the, when the original municipal landfill was cited, that they'd never put asbestos in it. But then when they couldn't continue their operations in Peoria, and they went to Plan B to put the chemical waste unit in Dewitt County, they went back on their pledge not to put asbestos in. And if you look, you can find, I believe it's four different schools and the University of Illinois asbestos sitting in their, their landfill. They've, they've tricked the IEP A a number of times, and the IEP A has reversed rulings it's made when they realized they were tricked, although it was too late then, that things were already in place and they were putting chemical waste in. And so, I'm just saying that people that have tricked people so many times, I think you might want to take a very clear look at what's going on and take a little bit of extra time to do so before, you know, we, we may get tricked once again. Okay, now, as to the table I passed around, as you can see, MGP waste, manufactured gas plant waste, there's the 30 tons of it there that we've talked about in the past. It was going in in 2011, and it went in very fast. Three quarters of that waste went in in that very first year, when not many people in the public knew what was going on. In fact, I've been trying to go to the EPA website and look at the various inspection reports, and it turns out, there's only, the April 16th, 2013 inspection report is only the second one that's on the web. This is in 2013, the thing's been operating 2011 and 2012. And in that second one that's on the web, the inspector himself, while he's there at the landfill, says he sees a truck that's dumping MGP waste. It's dumping waste from an MGP site into the chemical waste unit. And so, he's actually witnessing an illegal dumping.
You have one minute, Mr. Noreen.
Okay, the, the point is that MGP waste is regulated by the federal government, and they don't allow it to go into the ground. It has to be treated first. We saw that in Fifth and Hill. It has to be remediated before it can go into a landfill, even a hazardous landfill. Even if they had the chemical waste unit there as a hazardous waste landfill, they couldn't put the MGP source material in without it being below a certain level, which would normally require remediation. And they've admitted in the documents that accompany this consent decree, that at least two times that it was over the limit. So, they broke the law two times. And the problem is that the, the things in the MGP waste attack the liner. They're not compatible with HTP liners, a lot of the compounds, the BTX compounds, which are benzene, tylenine, ethyl benzene, and xylene, all of those attack the liner, as well as napalene and other things. So, there's a very good argument for that waste to come out, and if you look at who put it in in the first place, they should share liability in having it removed, because those companies know that they had MGP waste, they know it cannot go into a landfill, and they trucked it and put it into Clinton anyway. So, they fooled the operators, or the operators may have colluded and let them in, but that stuff should not be there, and the federal government should know about this, because it's their regulations that are being violated. And I don't see how we can have a consent decree that will violate the federal regulations.
Okay, your time is up. I would like to ask you, you said about asbestos being buried, but that's not on your chart here?
That's right.
So, is that a different year?
No, it's just a different category. They have a separate category for asbestos, and when the operator, when the inspector goes in, he checks the different logs. And he's reported what is in the asbestos log, but for some reason, I'm not sure if it's, they may have put it in the municipal landfill side, I don't know where they put it. But, in the inspection report for, that I have on the, that that chart came from and that I emailed you the link to, you can go to that particular inspection report and it'll talk about the asbestos waste that's in there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Diane?
At this educational meeting on the 19th, who is, are the official presenters at that meeting?
Well, that's a question you'd have to ask Claudia Lindhoff. Our, our meeting is actually tomorrow to finish out the planning of it, and I unfortunately missed one of the planning meetings in the summer.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask her, thank you.
We did have someone come from healthcare consumers in favor, testify in favor of us passing the consent decree. That was Jenny Putman.
Oh, Jenny Putman was here to pass out the leaflets.
Well, she did say that she supported it, and my understanding from talking with, with Claudia is that they support the consent decree, but they understand that this is just the beginning of a process, that we need to work on stronger laws.
Well, Jenny told me that the Champaign County Health Consumers actually is neutral on the issue, and I'm asking for an extension of time.
Okay, so you're doing it on behalf of yourself, rather than?
On behalf of myself, right.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I'd also like to point out that some of the questions Aaron was asking are answered in that, that document about exactly what is in the, the unit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Adessa Vogel does not wish to speak, but she is opposed to the ordinance rezoning the parcel on Matthews Avenue from R2 to R4. Bishop King James Underwood does not wish to speak, but is concerned about the sewer problems at the Ellis subdivision. Dr. Evelyn Underwood, um, did you want to, did you want to speak?
At the time of the-
Oh, okay, alright. Well, it is past 8:15, but we'll move on. Well, it is past 8:15, but we'll move on. Next is the unfinished business ordinance number 2015-07-066, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, rezoning a .187 acre parcel at 703 North Matthews Avenue from R2, single-family residential, to the R4, medium-density, multiple-family residential district.
Yeah. Out of longstanding friendship with the current owner and his family and past financial dealings with him and potential future financial dealings, I think because of the potential for appearances of a conflict of interest or an actual conflict, I will recuse myself from discussion and voting on this issue.
Good evening. So just to quickly review the case, it's 703 North Matthews, an organization, CU at Home, which provides relief for economically challenged populations in the area, is proposing to put in a, or is requesting a special use permit for a home for adjustment for transitional housing for women at the property. To do that, they will also have to request a rezoning from R2, single-family residential, to R4, medium-density, multiple-family residential. The reason that they are requesting that rezoning is because that is the lowest intensity residential zoning district that they'd be allowed to apply for the use for which they're applying. So this is a joint application of a rezoning from R2 to R4 and upon the unapproved rezoning, a special use permit to operate a home for adjustment as defined in the zoning ordinance. So the, this case was previously heard on July 13th. The council, first it was approved by the Urbana Plan Commission on June 25th and then the council heard this on July 13th. And there was discourse between the applicant and the council regarding, mainly among the issues of community outreach and how much input the neighborhood had for having some of their questions answered, having information exchanged between the two sides about concerns or different elements related to how the proposal would fit in with the surrounding neighborhood. And it was suggested that the applicant should seek some further outreach and communication between the next meeting. So continuance was extended to this date. Between now and then, there was a meeting at the Urbana City Building on August 10th, provided for residents to talk with the applicant as well as several members of CU at Home and a member of the covenant, which is also participating in the application. That was, that did get a chance to have some information provided and some exchange of viewpoints and some conversations, although it was a more low, an event with lower attendance. And, but that did allow for an event on August 22nd to be scheduled, which was a public cookout. It was, notice was provided to people on many city blocks. It was just some food that was provided and a chance to speak with the applicant. And anyone could come and provide their input, provide their information or seek information. The applicant felt, Melody Jackson, who was here tonight to answer any questions, did feel that the event went, went well considering at least in terms of providing better, people had a chance to voice their opinion. They had a chance to just, to, I think, to say what they wanted to do in the neighborhood and that it was limited to the single-family home of renovating it of the inside, not replacing it or demolishing it, but just renovating mostly the interior to make it habitable for no more than eight women as well and how certain effects such as parking or the intensity of use or, you know, attendance or safety issues, how those would be handled. And, you know, I understand Mary, Ms. Brooks who spoke earlier, had submitted some questions that she wanted to, you know, that she was asking of the applicant. And I know the applicant would be very able to answer those questions if she were, if she were asked them. I do understand that some of the people who attended the event or who have spoken with city staff obviously have expressed opposition or concern tonight or might be here to speak as well. But we are here tonight just because of the current status of the case in which there has been more dialogue and there has been more exchanging of information, I think, to better account for the proposals, the proposed homes placed in the surrounding neighborhood. So with that, the staff recommendation is the same for allowing, for recommending approval of the rezoning as well as the special use permit with the condition, for the special use permit, that the site is not redeveloped to a higher density and that the home does not exceed the maximum allowable occupancy of eight residents and one staff member, and that the petitioner provide a parking plan subject to the review and approval of the zoning administrator and city engineer depicting at least three parking spaces either onsite or within 600 feet of the subject property. So are there any, and those were recommendations forwarded by the Plan Commission. Are there any questions? Yes?
Diane, go ahead.
Just to clarify, the conditions that you just mentioned are attached to the special use permit and they're not attached to the property so that another property owner would not be bound by either of these conditions?
Those are, the two conditions are strictly for the special use permit, correct? I don't believe we can apply conditions for a rezoning. Because a rezon has to be either.
Thank you.
Yes or no?
Anyone else? Mike?
Just kind of a silly question, but, so Google Maps spells this street with one T. So are we right or are they?
It is one T, I believe.
Just if it's a zoning matter, we probably ought to be particular. I would just say that we ought to research that. And I would think the city has it spelled correctly, but...
Could be wrong.
Check into that.
Google probably prides themselves in street names, so.
If I may.
Okay.
It is with one T. I suppose we could blame Microsoft for autocorrect.
So Google's right and Microsoft is wrong.
Matthews is with one T in the city of Urbana.
Yes, that's absolutely true.
Anyone else have a question or a comment?
This is just a procedural comment. Since this is unfinished business, do we need a motion or is this already on the, has this already been moved?
No, we're talking about it. We have to deal with it. So we're waiting for a motion, if there is a motion.
Well, I'll, just to set the procedural wheels going, I'll move approval.
And I would second then.
Okay, motion by Jacobson, seconded by Roberts to approve ordinance number 2015-07-066. So, any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Ammons?
So when we move something from a lesser class, if you will, of zoning and move to, so from R2 to R4, is this an increase in value in the property?
Well, the, the property value is one of the considerations taken into the LaSalle criteria, which is kind of a set of six questions for any rezoning, which is in the original memo. I can pull that up if you would like me to, but, you know, in the effort to save time. The increase in value, the value change of rezoning it, hard to say. It would depend on the prospect of how likely it could be redeveloped to, you know, that limit, that small circumstance that it might, someone might acquire it and redevelop it to a multi-unit base. But I'm not certain how much of an effect it would have on the property value given the current acquisition would keep the existing structure intact.
And when we talk about spot zoning, when I look at the map, I was talking to Alderman Marlin earlier before the meeting and I'm looking at the map and seeing all these high-density areas of R2 that do not have any other, they don't, we don't approve spot zoning. Why would we approve this in a situation of spot zoning and not approve it in other locations?
Well, the, you know, I believe R2 is the lower, the lower intensity zoning in which, yeah, it is, it would be mostly surrounded by R2. Now, concern was brought up during the Plan Commission hearing about the fact that it is a spot zoning. When taken into all the other consideration of the location that works for the mission of CU at Home, that the services would be able to provide for the occupants of the home and close to hospital, close to mass transit and transportation, close to churches and areas that they do outreach. In the context of all those different elements, the Plan Commission decided that while it technically is, it could be considered a spot zoning, that it was appropriate to approve with all the circumstances under consideration.
Dennis and then Diane?
And the packet didn't include material that we received earlier, which I think is kind of useful to look at, and that would be the overview of the property compared to other properties surrounding it. And as I remember, this was backed up against the railroad track and some other higher-zoned and different-zoned districts. So do you have a, can you pull up the?
The first memo?
Site perspective view of the map, the map of the, sky map of the area?
There might have been one in the first council memo that I'm pulling up right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It was perhaps in the Planning Commission's review.
Now with the exhibits attached.
And as I remember, this was not, this was not a property that was like just in the center of an R2 district, but is at the very edge of an R2 district.
Let me see if I can.
Which is basically one of the reasons why I didn't find this to be a problematic rezoning request. And the second thing that, that I noticed in the original conversation that we had was that it was a successful use of a building that is, has some historic nature. It was a single-family residence for some time, but was in danger of not being maintained well. And it seems to me that this reuse would actually preserve the existing structure rather than asking that some kind of new complex is being built on this property, which I think actually somewhat enhances the request because it's not remaking or remodeling the existing structure to become somehow morphed into something modern and more with a larger footprint on the property.
So, sorry, my request is difficult for you guys.
No, neither.
So I wanted to, I'm sorry.
Okay, are you finished, Dennis?
I'm done, yeah.
Did you get your question answered? Okay, Diane and then Erin.
My, excuse me, my concern about this request is, number one, the issue of, it is spot zoning and it's, it's changing the zoning from R2 to R4 on a single parcel that is surrounded by R2 residences. And if you look at every other part of the city, it is not something we would do, I don't think, in any other neighborhood in the city. In fact, we've fought it actively in other neighborhoods in the city. So I keep asking myself, or telling, you know, what keeps coming back to me is that a use is transient. It can be this very, you know, worthwhile use today, but it may not be there next year. And then the zoning is, is more permanent. Once it goes to R4, it's not going back to R2. That's pretty much a given. And in R4, you have many more options in terms of your use, including multifamily dwellings, library, museum, gallery, that's very nice, professional business office, fire stations, parking garages, parking lots, electrical substations, that's a conditional use, or nursing homes, assisted living facilities, that's another conditional use. So there's a much wider range of potential uses there. And the uses are transient. The zoning is not. So when I, when I ask myself, would I approve this kind of zoning change in South Urbana, I would say no. If it was in East Urbana, I'd vote no. If it was in Central West Urbana, I would vote no. And I'm finding it hard to support this in North Urbana. But that's my concern, is this issue of changing the zoning on one parcel when it is very much different from the rest of the neighborhood. Because that's a permanent change, more than the use itself.
Dennis, did you want me to go to the other map showing the existing land use?
It was on the edge.
Well, it does show that this parcel is actually touching properties that have completely different uses. Yes, they are north. This is in north of the railroad track as opposed to south. And if you want to use the railroad track as, you know, the protective barrier, you are jumping it. But because of the, because of the value of the use and because the property itself is not going to be changed except for on the interior and because there are many homes in probably the R2 district that have more than one family member living in it, there'd probably be some homes in this area that have, you know, multiple, you know, families, you know, 10 kids perhaps in one of the homes. It's not like, I don't see really that this is like a grievous error for our request.
Okay, Erin?
So I wanted to say to Marilyn and Sister Karen and everyone who has been involved with this at CU, I've had several meetings with all of you. You have been forthright with your questions and open and honest about what it is that you want to do. I really believe in what you're trying to do and from the bottom of my heart, I do. But I have a larger concern that you all are sort of getting wrapped up into and with the dream that you have, which I actually support. Been working on these types of issues for a long time. The larger issue that we're facing about rezoning and about the concerns that the constituents, my constituents have in particular, in this particular area, are larger implications of what happens once you change zoning. Once it moves from one thing to another, and it's very difficult for it to go back to something else, what happens then if and when this doesn't work out, it doesn't maintain itself, and now somebody comes along and says, hey, we want to make this an electrical substation, right? You know, or whatever it is that they want to do. I have, my, I, I live in this area as well as the constituents that I represent are extremely concerned about where this is going and where it could possibly lead. And so while I absolutely applaud the effort in a, in this particular issue, I don't have overwhelming support from my constituents to say, hey, go forward. It's about a 50/50 situation and there's all this other larger implications that we have. And I thank you all. You asked, I asked you all to do the cookout. You did it. I asked you all to postpone the meetings. You did all those things. You answered all those questions. But these larger implications, I can't look past them. So in this, because of that, unfortunately, I'll have to vote no on this.
Eric?
I want to address the spot zoning issue because I live in an area that's spot zoned. That is, I live directly across the street from an apartment building. And my apartment, and my family home is also directly north of the apartment building that you owned, Diane. And so it's okay, it's okay to have this kind of mixture if there's a good reason for it. Our neighborhood has stabilized as a mixed neighborhood. We have a mixture of single-family homes, owner-occupied homes, and apartment buildings. And as long as they are, you know, well-done, it can work. The, so I just, I guess I've really thought hard about this particular issue. I've thought hard about the women who would be served. Naomi used to be the director of a women's fund and she never violated her confidences in terms of telling me, you know, anything directly about them, but I heard anonymized stories. And these are people largely who are deserving of transition housing and need it. The stories that I heard were abusive husbands, irresponsible husbands or boyfriends. They were getting away from real, not only from abuse, but real physical danger and they needed a place. The, the... The, I went to the cookout, and I heard the questions asked, and I heard the questions answered. No boyfriends, no visitors of the opposite sex. The very successful operation for men elsewhere in the community. I asked myself whether I would, what would I do if this were my neighborhood? And actually, I know what I would do. I absolutely know what I could do, because we live catty-corner from St. Patrick's Church, and St. Pat's at one time was going to, was thinking about moving a supported housing onto their property, right next to the church. And Naomi and I went to a meeting and said, that's great with us, that was within a block of us. So, actually, it didn't happen because their congregation didn't want it to happen. But we, as neighbors, were happy for that. I think, as I went to the meeting on the property and I looked, I felt that a well-maintained use of this property, as is proposed, would actually be much more of an asset to the community than the, than the, you know, than a vacant property. So, I intend to support this. I intend to support this because I believe in the mission. I intend to support it because the, because our experience in our neighborhood says that supported housing can exist very well, adjacent to, adjacent to more standard residential housing. And so, anyway, that's, that's where I am.
Diane?
Just for the record, I would like to say that the buildings I used to own is zoned R3, which is single and two-family residential, not R4, which is being proposed here. And I'm basing my opinion on my 27 years of living in West Urbana, where probably the single biggest issue in that neighborhood over the years has been the conflict, and it has been a conflict, between apartments versus single-family homes and a desire to preserve the single-family nature of the neighborhood. And anyone who's seen the WOONAA list for a week is aware of that. So, our properties were actually homes converted to duplexes next door to you. So, that's for the record.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Jacobson, seconded by Roberts. Oh, Mike Madigan wants to say something.
So, some of my friends are for this, and some of my friends are against this. So, I'm going to be with my friends.
You may also be the swing vote.
Well, that's abundantly clear, that's why I thought I'd speak up. Thanks a lot, Bill. But I guess what it boils down to, I think both sides make compelling arguments. But I think in a zoning matter, I think my test should be, what does the alderman from that ward think? So, I will be supporting the alderman from that ward.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
No.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
No.
Okay, so that's three to three, correct?
No. Four to
Four to two? Well, I guess I miscounted. Okay, so the motion is defeated. Thank you. So, we don't have to deal then with the next ordinance, because that's special use permit. Okay, let's move on to reports of standing committees. We have the committee of the whole. I think we'll skip number A, and we should go to number B, correct? Who was doing the committee of the whole? Was that you, Bill?
Diane.
It was Diane, sorry, go ahead.
No.
Oh, it was Mike Madigan. Would you like to start with B, please, so we can get to A when the people come back in the room?
Item B on the Committee of the Whole Agenda is ordinance number 2015-08-090, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, a portion of 108 East Water Street. The committee forwarded this ordinance to the City Council with recommendation for approval, and on behalf of the committee, I submit.
Okay, motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes, that motion carries. Okay, we have the people who are going to talk about the landfill back in the room. So, would you like to start, Steve Carter?
Steve Carter, 609 West Green, Street in Champaign. And I'll keep my comments at a broader level, because we have two attorneys here, and I can't, I can't compete with two lawyers in terms of the details of the agreement. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, we've been, we've had some success. We started this four years ago, 2011, just before I retired, and it's provided a nice retirement for me, too, in case my wife wants me out of the house, while I can always work on aquifer issues. But we've had some success, because we've had a lot of people involved, and I don't think people would have listened to us, except for the fact that, you know, we have 14 or 15 local governments who have all worked together. Mayor Pressing has been great about showing up at educational events. The key meeting was one with the governor's staff and the general counsel and director of IEP in May, and shortly after that, Illinois EPA modified their permit that required the landfill to stop taking MGP waste. So, we've had, we've had some impact, again, because of the people working together. One of the things, when we first started out, we got involved at 11:59, if you recall, the federal government was getting ready to issue a permit allowing the storage of PCBs in the Clinton landfill above the aquifer. And so, our big, our biggest issue was, how are we going to stop them from doing this? Because it looked like it was imminent. And characteristic of the effort of all these four years, we had good bipartisan support, both Senator Durbin and Senator Kirk indicated to EPA that, you know, maybe they didn't have to hurry that approval, to give us time to do some other things. Since then, you know, we've had support from both the Republican and Democratic side, counties, cities, large urban areas, rural areas, agriculture, city folks. I mean, it's been a fun project to work on, because so many people have come together to try to save the quality of their water. We were able to hire two of the best environmental attorneys in the state. Joe Hooker, the deputy assistant, deputy city attorney, assistant city attorney in Champaign, has spent tremendous time working on behalf of the coalition. We have attorneys for many of the other coalition members who have reviewed all these documents as well. The Attorney General's Office weighed in relatively early on our side when they heard our case, they agreed with us, and so, the Attorney General's Office has been supportive as well as Illinois EPA. We're at the point now where we have a very narrow lawsuit pending. So, this lawsuit is not going to save the world. All it was going to do was require the landfill to go back through a siting process with the Dewitt County Board. So, the focus of the lawsuits were very narrow, and so, it's understandable that the consent decree ending the lawsuit, the settlement, is very narrow, too. It's not there to solve all the issues with the landfill, and we knew that going in. This is a long-term effort that we're going to have to make. The lawsuit was one mechanism to try to stop things, stop the PCBs, stop the manufactured gas plant waste. It looks like we're going to be successful in doing that, but how do we, how do we protect the landfill over the long term? There are a lot of other things we need to be doing in terms of additional legislation, looking at other landfills that are in place and what's happening to them. This isn't the only landfill, looking at Chinute Air Force Base and the chemicals that the air force has deposited there. So, there are a lot of issues we need to be concerned about, and we need to start working on all of those things. But we'll be successful, again, only if we can keep the coalition together and get the, keep the support that we have there. Part of the support has been the work of the citizens, too. The watch group has been very instrumental in raising concerns. They're the ones that are on the ground, so they've been great partners to work with as well. We just happen to disagree on the consent decree. Healthcare consumers has become a very active supporter of this, as well as other environmental groups. So, there's a lot of folks that are interested in this, but I think the time has come to, let's settle this, the lawsuit, let's focus on the other things that need to be done to protect our aquifer in the long term. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve Carter? Eric Jacobson?
So, it's a very complicated issue, but I think it boils down to something that may be stated very simply in terms of the two sides on the consent decree. I think everybody agrees that it was very bad for the MGP source material to go into the landfill. And I think everybody agrees that in the long term, it ought to come out. But the question seems to be, is it more, is that end result more likely to be affected by agreeing to this decree and then moving on that other front? Or is it more likely to be affected by rejecting the consent decree? At least, that's how I see it. And so, I just want to ask your, firstly, have I phrased the issue approximately right? And secondly, if I have, what is your opinion?
Well, you know, the attorneys might be better able to talk about, well, what's the likelihood of a lawsuit being successful in that? But, because, you know, my, from my perspective, I think it's unlikely that the MGP waste will be removed, as much as we would like it to be. It was placed there with the permission of Illinois PA. And in the consent decree includes additional testing, which is very important, to test, do the testing of the area. And so, if it looks like there's some contamination, then Illinois EPA can step in and force the removal. And I think, I think that's probably a reasonable thing to do, that if it looks like there's a problem, then Illinois can step in, Illinois EPA can step in and force it. To remove it without having a problem being demonstrated right now runs the risk of damaging the liner and all the other infrastructure that's there now. Plus, you know, who's going to force a company to remove material that Illinois EPA allowed them to place there to begin with? So, my own feeling is, unless there's an issue, I don't think anyone's going to force them to remove the small amount of MGP waste. It'd be great if they would do that, but, you know, just from a practical standpoint, I just don't see that happening.
Dennis?
Yes, thanks. So, we have gotten really, a really good set of documents from the various people who've had opinions about it, and we also have here, and I guess it's a, for immediate release, so this is like a press bulletin from Chris Coster, and it has the City of Champaign's logo on it. And it's basically a summary of, I guess, the position of the participants who are urging the adoption of this. So, I just want to ask you a few questions about it.
Mr. Hooker's the one who wrote that.
Yes.
So, Joe is here and would be happy to respond to that.
All right, all right. Do you want me to wait for?
If that would be okay?
Yeah, if Joe Hooker wrote it, we better ask Joe Hooker. So, thank you very much. Do you want both attorneys to come up? Yes, please do come up.
It's good to be back with all of you. This is Albert Edger. He's one of the attorneys who's been working on this for us. I thought it'd be helpful to see that there is a real person with a lot of expertise, who's been toiling on this on our behalf since
Well, thank you very much.
Representative Pressing.
Well, okay, well, thank you very much. We've heard good things about you, so
Yeah, and
We've got lots of questions.
So, what questions do you have? I'd be happy to summarize some things, but yeah, any questions you have.
Okay, Dennis is first, then Diane, then Bill?
And I'm sure I won't ask all the questions, so I'll probably leave plenty behind. Just, you know, there's just some things, first of all, we get, you know, one of the documents, you know, talks about like how excellent the lawyer team is behind, you know, the proposal and how they built it over time and all that, which I appreciate. Doesn't matter to me so much that, I guess I'm concerned about expertise, and that's great, but I'm, even if Colombo was doing this, I would hope that it would be done adequately and be a, something that we could stand on and count on for being of use to the communities involved. You know, okay, some of the points that are in this document that are, the press release makes various claims, or summarizes the, what Clinton landfill will do and agrees to do and what we're going to be doing. So, it says here that it agrees to cover the MGP waste already deposited in the chemical waste unit pursuant to the earlier Illinois EPA approval with a 12-inch layer of impermeable clay soil. And then, it's going to be covered by municipal waste, is that correct?
Correct.
So, you know, any stray dog can cut, can dig a hole 12 inches deep. Why is 12 inches considered adequate? Why isn't it 30 feet or something really significant? Why, are we, are we settling for something that's just a thin coating that really has no value?
I'd say no, and 12 inches is kind of like the daily cover notion, too. And what you have to appreciate is, this is over a very large area, so
Why would we care, why would we care about the area if we wanted to have adequate coverage?
Well, I guess my response to you is, I don't think it's insignificant, and I think the judgment was from our attorney, David Wentworth is the one who has the more expertise in landfill regulations, and he was responsible for negotiating that, and he views that as pretty significant to accomplish the objectives, which are basically to keep water and other waste material out of that, the waste that'll remain there.
Now, I wish that Chris Dore was here, because he's an expert on landfill and sedimentation and seepage, and I think I would like to really know about what he would say about 12 inches, if that was adequate.
Well, and I guess one thing, again, to bear in mind, and I appreciate the ongoing debate about whether this is adequate or not adequate, this is not something we really could accomplish with our lawsuit in any event, if we continue to litigate. And that's an important thing to remember, and I don't want everybody to lose sight of that, because I have to say, from time to time, I think we are somewhat losing sight of what our lawsuit was all about, which is to get back to the Dewitt County Board for a local siting hearing. And this consent decree was a lot more than that. It basically avoids the need to even do that. They commit to not accepting either of these waste streams forever, anywhere over the aquifer in Dewitt County. A pretty dramatic result, in my view, given the limited nature of our lawsuit. So, but to get back to your question, Mr. Wentworth, his opinion was that that was a pretty significant concession for them to make, and an important concession for them.
And you're saying that 12 inches is what they would normally drop on the landfill in a day, just as a typical cover for deposited waste?
I, that's kind of my understanding, and I'm not the best person to speak to that. Unfortunately, David had to go to normal, they're considering this tonight, too, and we're kind of spreading ourselves a little thin.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So, I appreciate the question, I understand the question.
The only thing I would add is, I'm a lawyer, I'm not going to tell you about 12 inches or 8 inches or 16 inches. I will say, however, the Illinois Attorney General's Office did consult with their landfill experts, and these are the sort, the recommendations came out of the AG's office also.
Yeah.
That had technical expertise.
It just depends on what's typical, rather than maybe what's, what would really be a great cover. All right, the second, then, point four in the memo says that Clinton Landfill Incorporated agrees to have a property license, a property-licensed, environmental-testing professional test the test the groundwater at the landfill for presence of toxic chemicals commonly found in MGP waste on a semi-annual basis. Okay, so that sounds good, because we have somebody who's going to be testing. And it's going to be a professional person, so it's not going to be the landfill company itself? It's going to be, what, an independent company that's going to do that?
Well, it can be actually a company affiliated with area waste, and that's the existing law, and some of us want to explore changing that law, but that is the way the current law works. It does have to be somebody certified and licensed with the state. They have to have the, you know, the right credentials to have the expertise to evaluate the test results, and they have to report those, and so.
And do we have the right to approve the choice of who, which professionals?
No, we do not. And we don't under current law. That's not something we could accomplish, in our view, with our litigation as well.
Okay.
And reasonable people think that that ought to change, but we can't accomplish that with our litigation.
Right. And then if, who pays for that service?
The landfill does.
The landfill's going to pay for that service?
Yes.
Right? And if there is a leakage, who remediates? Who pays for the remediation?
Well, the landfill would.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. And so we've got a landfill in Urbana, and we've been, we have test wells, and we've been watching it, and we get a report every year. And I can remember, I think I brought this up before, that I think it costs us $17,000 a year to monitor the wells, and we've had to do some remediation and ditch digging to accumulate, to collect some seepage out of the landfill. So I think it wouldn't be a surprise to see some seepage, and I'm just wondering, that's a concern for me. Finally, it says here that the State of Illinois, through the Illinois Attorney's General Office and the Illinois EPA, reserve the right to pursue any future criminal or civil violations related to any future contamination of the environment from the MGP waste that's already been accepted by the Clinton landfill, and any remedies available under law, including but not limited to the removal of the waste material causing contamination. So does that then give us full right to pursue removal if there is contamination, seepage?
The individual members of the coalition would not have that right. Any citizen would have that right. DeWitt County would have that right. The state's attorney in DeWitt County would have that right. And the Illinois Attorney General and the Illinois EPA would have that right. And it was the considered view of our attorneys that that's a pretty unusual remedy, and that unless the Attorney General and the Illinois EPA were actively involved in seeking that, that's very unlikely to happen in any event.
So there's no chance that there's going to be anybody who's going to be successfully requesting the removal of contamination?
No, that's not correct. I just, as I said, the Illinois, the Attorney General's Office and the Illinois EPA and any affected citizen would be able to seek that. Any citizen, probably in DeWitt County, who gets their water from the Mohammed Aquifer, the DeWitt County State's Attorney would certainly be able to seek that right. The rights are pretty broad generally for the citizens who have that right.
And why would the city not want, why would a city or a county that's over the aquifer and being affected not want to be a participant in a lawsuit?
Well, I don't think it's something we didn't want, it's just something that.
That we didn't get.
We weren't able to get them to agree to.
Okay, so that's like a really key thing here. You're, so we're depending really on a poor farmer or average Joe who's got a concern.
Well, yeah, let me, let me clarify one point. All of the coalition members can continue to file a citizen's lawsuit, and there's other kind of civil remedies, too. We can continue to seek any civil or criminal remedies available to us under law. The one thing we can't do ourselves is seek an order of exhumation. But we have the right to start the process and bring this to the attention of the authorities.
Is it possible to seek damages without asking for remediation? I mean, what if, what if there's seepage? Can the different communities then seek damages for that leak?
Well, if the law provides for that, the answer is clearly yes. And if the law doesn't provide for it, the answer is clearly no.
And which law are we going to be using to determine that?
I, it's getting kind of hypothetical as to what will happen under various circumstances.
I think we can count on a leakage eventually.
Okay, well, so we're talking about a leak, well, I don't know what we can count on eventually. This waste doesn't last forever, and what kind of waste it will be if and when it ever leaks is, I'm not prepared to speculate on. But let's say it leaks in 20 years.
Let's say, yeah.
As we've heard, as the agreement does, you could seek a remedy for it. Currently, you probably could not seek damages now, because there is no damage remedy unless it was directly your water that was affected. There are cases that have been brought for affecting water, and if you could prove damages to your water, you could do that. The farmer could prove damages to his water, you could seek money damages for the replacement water. I was involved in a case in Southern Illinois involving atrazine in water supplies, and Syngenta did pay a substantial amount of money to cities in order to redress their problems from atrazine getting into their water.
So a city could benefit from that if a well owned by the city was contaminated by seepage?
Yes, they could. They could sue for money damages.
But they're not being, for money damages, but they, they're prohibited from seeking criminal?
Well, you couldn't seek criminal remedies anyway.
Well, okay, I'm just wondering, I mean, you know, the city, the city or community or county is, is being, is suffering, and the community in general is going to be, could be suffering from the seepage ultimately to the aquifer, so.
Yeah.
The remedy would only be available to a individual party, here's thinking.
Well, the remedy's only ever available to the individual party who's damaged.
Who's damaged.
So if you could prove damages, you could potentially seek a remedy, but that's, you know.
Hypothetical, okay.
That's, that's kind of hypothetical. The only thing this does, I mean, let's, what they got out of this deal is that you can't seek exhumation based on, well, the parties to this, the municipalities cannot seek that the waste be exhumed. Can I ask for anything else? And also, there are other theories, not, well, I don't think the cities would probably be doing it, but there's federal law, RECR, that would allow remedying an imminent danger. It's called imminent endangerment under RECR, if you have a resource, a potential resource damage from something like a leaking landfill. And it has been used. In fact, the group just won a case in Maine on a theory like that very recently. There have been a lot of cases under RECR where there's an imminent endangerment. So there are other remedies that other people will be, will be able to use. However, that is one thing. The immediate coalition partners would not be able to seek that remedy, but the deal makes it possible to seek about every other remedy.
Okay, I'll stop and allow the people to have their questions.
Diane?
One, one thing that came through to me after I read through this material is that it appears that some of the critical decisions that may be made by the DeWitt County Board would be taken out of their control and solidified in this consent decree. And as far as I'm concerned, the less they have to do with making decisions about this landfill, the better, considering their deplorable history on this thing.
Yeah, and that's precisely, I want to kind of set the framework. This is a bad situation for a lawyer to be in, because I'm sort of arguing against the case I've been making for three years. And frankly, I don't want to argue too well, because this is a public forum, and I don't want all of this to be quoted in court a year later when I want to make the other argument, or somehow the deal falls through and I do want to make this argument. So, so the basic point is, is our whole legal theory, and I represent the Sierra Club, that's been my main client since 1982. I've sued a lot more municipalities than I've represented. So I just want to say, we, convincing the Sierra Club to settle cases is not, is not an easy matter, and so I've done this a fair amount. You've got to look, though, at what you can realistically achieve with the legal theory you have. Our legal theory is that they got permission from the DeWitt County Board in 2002 to build a municipal landfill, but then they went outside of that to build a type of landfill that they didn't have permission for. So happens that I EPA said that they did have permission and that they could issue the license anyway. So that's what the argument was about. Our remedy, if we win, we hit a home run. Right now, by the way, we're losing. Right now, the Pollution Control Board has thrown out your case and said, you can't do anything about the fact that they didn't require siting, do proper siting. You're, so, so we're losing. But, okay, I'm great, I'm going to hit a home run next inning. But right now, if we win, if we win on that theory, that they have to go, they should have done the SB 172, where does that send us? Sends us back to the DeWitt County Board. Because of course, they're going to go back and say, oh, we just lost, it seems we need your permission. Now, give us the permission to put in the hazardous waste site, as opposed to just the municipal waste site we had. So you're counting on now, if we win, what you get is the right to convince the DeWitt County Board not to give that permission. Instead, what this deal gives us is the right to kill the possibility of any new MGP waste going in there for all eternity, or any PCB waste going in there for all eternity. So, you know, I guess, yes, you gave up something. I'm not, I'm not going to lie, you've had to give up something. But in, in order to give up that little thing, the right to seek exhumation of the relatively small amount of waste that's gone in there, you have managed to block the DeWitt County Board from ever agreeing to put MG, more MGP waste there or any PCB waste in there.
Okay, thank you. Can I follow? Go, go ahead.
And from here on out, the only waste, I mean, it's a, it's a, let's see, 135 acres municipal landfill, and there's 22 and a half chemical acre chemical waste units. So they're going to fill it up with something. So from here on out, the only thing that can be there buried, either in the chemical waste unit or the municipal solid waste unit, is municipal solid waste, non-hazardous special waste, certified non-special waste, and any other waste that could go in a regular landfill. And today, that includes coal ash, because coal ash is classified as non-hazardous waste, which is one of the things we need to change in the state law going forward.
Correct. And let me just put that, say that a different way. What the consent decree does is says, all you can put in this chemical waste unit that they designed hazardous waste conditions at considerable extra expense. So the notion that they're somehow lighting cigars and popping the corks out of their champagne, like this is a big victory for them, not a very accurate statement of where we're at, quite frankly. The only thing they can put in the chemical waste unit is something they've been allowed to put in the larger landfill, landfill number three, since 2002, or more technically, since 2007, when the Illinois EPA granted them permission for landfill number three as a municipal solid waste landfill. So they lose all the benefit of the added investment in that chemical waste unit if we do this consent decree. And I guess another point I want to clarify, because I, it was reported to me that there was a statement that I would suggest to you is a misstatement, is the notion that they can never, ever renew their request before the US EPA to bring these PCB contaminated waste there is completely inaccurate, okay? The notion that, that the sole source aquifer designation solved our problem is not accurate, okay? I mean, and we've had a number of people say that again and again. Repeating it doesn't make it accurate. It's not accurate. And let me amplify that. You now have materials, I think, you have this actual regulation that has been discussed that purports to prevent them from ever again seeking requests from the US EPA for permission to put HP, or PCB contaminated waste regulated by the Toxic Substance Control Act. And what they always omit to mention is this unless clause. It's unless the stratum under the facility meets these certain requirements about how quick materials can percolate through them, how impervious the soils are, the rate at which contaminants can go through the stratum as they describe it. And the fact of the matter is, and this is all a matter of public record that anyone can look at, the landfill's consultants said they could meet those additional restrictions. So I don't want anybody to be misled. They had some experts saying, well, we can meet those. Yeah, there's some additional requirements now that it's a sole source aquifer, but guess what? We can meet those as well. And this was the source of a heated technical dispute between their consultant Shaw Environmental, this is the folks they brought in with their US EPA application, and KPRG and Associates, a very skillful, qualified expert hired by the Mohammed Valley Water Authority. So these two experts are battling it out in the record, so to speak, before the US EPA, and they're filing one report, and then a rebuttal to that report, and then a rebuttal to that report. And until you read that, you can't fully appreciate the back and forth and how two sets of experts can come to completely different conclusions about whether technical requirements are met. But by golly, they did come to different requirements. And what's more troubling than that is that it appears the US EPA sided with Shaw. They had their experts come in and basically parrot what Shaw said in their reports. So the notion that, you know, the sole source aquifer designation in some manner takes care of this, or however it's been characterized, is just simply inaccurate. And so that's a major benefit we get with this consent decree. I couldn't disagree more strongly with that characterization. They agreed to never, ever, ever again seek permission to put those kind of wastes anywhere in DeWitt County over the aquifer, not just in this facility, anywhere over the aquifer, regardless of whether they can meet those requirements or not. And bear in mind, their expert says they can. So I just wanted to clarify that particular misstatement.
Okay. Bill Brown, and then Eric and Charlie.
Yeah, I think last time I was concerned about the extra, after it said we don't accept municipal solid waste, it also said non-hazardous special waste and certified non-hazardous waste, non-special waste. I think one of your memos earlier answered that, because apparently when the landfill was originally permitted, the local siting gave them that ability to put the non-hazardous special waste and certified non-special waste in it, besides just municipal waste. Is that right?
I think that's correct, but, but the main, the main point to take away from this, I mean, we can get really kind of lost in the details of some of the language. The consent decree unmistakably says they can only accept waste that they can accept in a solid, in a municipal solid waste landfill. And some of those wastes that you described are examples of the kind of waste they've always been able to accept in the larger landfill number three, since the DeWitt County Board approved it way back in 2002, and the Illinois EPA granted its initial permit for landfill number three in 2007.
And then the MGP waste that's there, the remediation waste, was it considered non-hazardous special waste? Do you know?
It was before this new law was passed, yes.
Okay.
Yes, the new law, and.
Could it have actually been disposed of in the unlined landfill, then?
No, it not, couldn't be an unlined landfill.
Or, I'm sorry, the landfill that's not the chemical waste unit, the larger landfill?
Yeah, there's a, yeah.
The single line.
Until that law was passed, and I think it was about a month ago now that the governor actually signed it, manufactured gas plant source material was considered a non-hazardous special waste. And so that law was extremely helpful. I don't want to diminish the value of that law. And admittedly, that, that law makes it a little more difficult for them to, perhaps, to get approval by the DeWitt County Board, because it appears now they would have to actually get approval for a hazardous waste landfill. Now, mind you, the chemical waste unit is already designed to hazardous waste landfill standards, so that kind of gives them a head start. And of course, the larger concern is this, this particular board is just completely unreliable about being sensitive to the, to kind of environmental concerns that we all have about this, so.
And then the HB 1326 is the law you were talking about?
Yes.
Originally, it was proposed to also include PCBs, and they, that wasn't in the final, is that correct? There's nothing.
Correct, yeah. We had, it wasn't our first choice, but frankly, those of us who were tracking it closely realized, boy, this is a big step forward. And the Illinois EPA actually cosponsored it, or authorized it, and, and so that was a, it wasn't all we wanted, and I think we've made these remarks earlier, we want to accomplish a lot more. a lot more with the legislation. A number of us think it would be prudent to have legislation that says no landfills over the, a sole source aquifer of any kind, ever again. And I think we may be able to get there. I think we're in much better shape now, because we have this sole source designation, but that's our ultimate goal.
And then just one more. If the goal, if one of the goals is to make the tests, the test results public without having to FOIA them, what would you think would be the best mechanism to go to?
Well, we could either do statutory change, or we could probably accomplish that with a rule change, and I can't speak to how hard, Albert probably has a better, I, none of tho- neither of those approaches is easy, I'm quite sure, and-
Well, first of all, I, I do FOIA requests all the time. I'm not sure why, on something like this, they, they only resist FOIA at IEP if it embarrasses them. I don't see that these figures are gonna embarrass them, so I've not had any trouble getting that. And I'm not sure, I suspect if enough people ask, they'd put it on their website. I can get every discharge monitoring report in the state off the IEP website. I look at those fairly frequently. You can look at mostly, I think a lot of the air reports are on the website. If the public asks for it, that's a pretty cheap thing for them to do. But again, FOIA is not that hard to do. We do them about once a week.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Eric?
So, just, just to be sure I understand, there's nothing in the consent decree that would prevent a citizens group such as WATCH from pursuing any action in the future? Is that correct?
Well, any action that they otherwise had standing to pursue, there'd be some question-
Right.
But no, I think the short answer is-
The short answer is we can't sign a deal for WATCH.
No, but, right. But, but there's nothing in the deal that precludes either WATCH or members of WATCH from pursuing any action that they have legal standing to pursue?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'll just say something on the record. If it weren't for the meeting on the 19th, I would be prepared to approve the consent decree now, but I do respect both motivations and the, you know, and also the fact that they really want full public consideration, so I would also be willing to hold off until the meeting of the 21st before we, before we take action.
Charlie?
I wanna go back to the sole source aquifer, and the code that you sent us says, Illinois Administrative Code 811.302. How does this Illinois code refer back to the federal EPA regulations?
Well, the, what, the, the code section that you have before you, interestingly, has been on the books for years now, as far as I can tell. But interestingly, we never had a sole source aquifer until we were successful with the Mohammed Aquifer. So this is always applied to any aquifer that's been officially designated by the US EPA as a sole source aquifer, and now we have actually succeeded in that effort. And so now this regulation clearly applies to the Mohammed Aquifer.
So it's a state regulation-
That incorporates-
Based on a federal-
Yes.
Result, okay.
Correct.
Because I pulled up the federal sole source designation, and what it does, and it says, "All proposed projects receiving federal funds are subject to review to ensure that they do not endanger the water source."
Right.
And it says basically that, that it's, it's only if federal funds are being used-
Right.
Then the feds step in.
Right.
So if no federal funds are involved, then, then it's this Illinois regulation that really comes into play, then?
Correct.
Right, right.
The federal protections are, are nice. I mean, but that, we knew from the beginning that getting the federal sole source aquifer designation was, was not gonna protect you from very much, and specifically, it was not gonna stop this project.
Okay. Dennis?
And I, this is just maybe a smaller thing, but, so if we were to adopt this, and the restrictions were applying to the Clinton landfill, would the, would the Clinton landfill then be known as, or listed as merely a municipal landfill? Are they still gonna be saying that they have chemical waste potential? They're not gonna be able to say that anymore, but what about hazardous waste? Are they gonna be able to-
No, they would not be able to do that, because they've never gotten either the state approval, or local siding approval for hazardous waste landfill.
So they are now, only can say that they are just a landfill?
Just a municipal solid waste landfill. Yeah, that's the practical effect of the consent decree, absolutely.
Okay, so they can no longer be a special depository for any other kinda thing?
That's correct, and, and, and there's been some misstatements, or misunderstanding about that, the suggestion that this, this one unit with these heightened protections somehow can accept waste that can't otherwise be accepted in the rest of the landfill, and that's not an accurate statement. Now they, now they have to put the same kinda waste they could put in the regular landfill in that unit, even though it has these added protections.
So they're just dumbed down to being just a regular old landfill now?
Well, that's one way to put it, sure.
Okay.
I do have a question, and that is, what is the incentive for the company to have this settlement? What is the incentive for the company, the landfill company?
Well, I think, they, they think there were obstacles to getting, they, they think it's uncertain if they were to go back to the DeWitt County Board, certainly. They think now that there would be people that would offer technical evidence for the first time, really rebutting what, what, you know, they would've put on without any resistance.
I'll tell you the truth, I don't know. I mean, I frankly, I'm not gonna say they're stupid, but they're giving you a very good deal. I think that they don't wanna litigate anymore, and they'd like to make peace, is really-
Just get on with business?
I think that they, I think that they've had it on this. And probably, I haven't looked, my guess is, is that, is that the price that they can get for storing some of these waste has gone down in some way, the market's probably shifted, and they probably would rather have peace than keep fighting. That's, I'm speculating too, and, you know, I have a hard enough time knowing what I think without trying to tell them what to think, and I don't know.
Charlie?
Well, I would speculate that just disposing of regular garbage is profitable enough, so. The, the second question I had has to do with the potential that this company, company's owners just spins off, creates another limited liability corporation, and, and goes before the DeWitt County Board on another piece of property, and builds a landfill of whatever kind, for any kind of waste.
Well, we can't-
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, we, there's nothing that stops these people-
The decree runs with the land, so it will affect any future owners of this facility, but we don't have the ability, I mean, you're really getting beyond what we have the capacity to do in our lawsuit now. Sure, it'd be great to say-
Right, yeah. Okay, so, and, yeah, so where I'm going with this is that I would really like to see a plan of action that the consortium has going forward, you know? And Fred Stevens was very eloquent today when he, when he lobbied me on, on this issue, and said, you know, we've gotten through phase one with a great coalition of partners at many levels of political support across party lines. And that's, it's a very good point. And moving forward, what's phase two?
I think-
Which is these, these changes. And so I really would like to see a list of what those potential things are that we're gonna go asking for, and what the cost to the consortium is to continue as a consortium. You know, do we have interest in the 14 members-
Right.
To keep moving forward for further protections?
Well, I think, I know Steve Carter's come up with a very interesting list, and that's been, yeah, yeah. And I know Al Wareman, our extremely capable technical consultant who basically got us the sole source aquifer designation, he's got some interesting ideas about legislation to look at. And, you know, if we're gonna spend money to do this, we have to come up with a new intergovernmental agreement, and that gives me the heebie-jeebies, to be honest with you, you know? But that's what we would need to do. We don't have any authority now to spend any money on it. My general sense is that all of the coalition members are on board of, yeah, we wanna look at legislation, and I think we would have a very easy time, in my view, getting resolutions, for example, passed by each and every one of the members to support various bills that we could get introduced, and I think that would be really helpful. That's nothing, we've never been able to do that, we've never done that in the past. We've had local legislators, and thank God for their efforts, suddenly introduce a bill, we find out about it later, then we kinda scramble and have some input on it. I think we need to be a lot more proactive on that, and I think as a group, we need to say, this isn't just some isolated citizens who want this, this is 14 governments in central Illinois who want this, and I think we have a much greater chance of getting through the various committees, and really getting the attention of the General Assembly.
I would have to say that when the, the group of governments met, that was the consensus that we, this is just the first step, and we're gonna have a plan, step by step, of what kind of legislation needs to be passed, and how we go about getting it done. Eric?
So, I did some quick looking up of the company. So the parent company is Peoria Disposal, and so they actually run, they actually own two waste disposal companies that do business in our town, Waste Management and Cleanweight.
Correct.
So, and they are actually all over the place, so they probably, so one perhaps reason for settling is that we actually regulate, and among us, the various communities, regulate lots of their, lots of their, you know, subunits.
Diane?
Well, as long as we're putting our list together, I think it's absolutely nuts that a county of like 16,000 people can set regulations and make decisions on a water supply affecting 750,000 people. So I would add to the list, a notification requirement anytime landfills like this, or in the future are being cited or considered.
I put together a number of proposals along those lines. The optimal outcome is no new landfills over the Mohammed Aquifer. Then we don't have to worry about getting notice from some small county that doesn't have the resources to understand or fight it. But the fallback position is, everybody who has a stake, whether that's every county, maybe every municipality, gets formal notice about any application for a new landfill facility over the Mohammed Aquifer, and I think that would be our fallback. That would not be as satisfactory, obviously, as a strict ban, but that's something that a number of us have put together, a number of permutations, and I think worth looking into as well.
My last question is, have you been invited, looking, looking at this meeting on the 19th? Have you been invited to speak at this meeting as a representative of the coalition? I'm concerned that this meeting is not going to present all sides of the issue. I'm not even sure what the meeting is. I also wanna point out that it is on the same day as the Illinois Municipal League Annual Conference in Chicago, and a number of us won't be available to attend on the 19th. So I'm not sure what this meeting on the 19th would accomplish if it doesn't provide a factual presentation. We've heard a lot of assertions tonight, and in previous nights, that are basically misunderstandings or misrepresentations, and I'm concerned that that same sort of thing will happen on the 19th. So are there representatives from the coalition invited to this meeting?
Well, I'm always invited to these things. I'm not formally, I mean, I don't have, you know, a place on an agenda, as far as I know. I'm a little torn about that, and I've been kind of in the middle of a lot of turmoil about this, and a lot of strange claims being made one way or the other. I'll probably be there, and I'm doing, in the, in the, what I'm doing to supplement that, is I'm trying to get information out in writing to respond to some of the talking points that I have to respectfully suggest are misleading, and represent misunderstandings of what our lawsuit can accomplish, and just as importantly, what the current law is. Those are kinda two problems that I've seen again and again, as far as, well, why don't you do this, why don't you do that? And the answer is, well, we don't have any power to do that, or ability to do that. You know, that needs to be the focus of legislation. And no matter how many times I say that, quite frankly, I'm, where I'm hearing the same talking points, you'd like to think that at some point, I, I'm, but, yeah, I'll probably be at that meeting.
Well, the City of Champaign and the City of Urbana are co-sponsors, so we should ask that you be there. Aaron?
I was gonna say something along the same lines, hoping that someone, either Mr. Hooker, or, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Albert Ettinger.
Mr. Ettinger?
Yes.
Would be there, just for a healthy and robust discussion-
Okay.
And maybe to just clarify some particular points.
Yeah.
I am not comfortable with the assertion that you guys have all the facts, and WATCH and some other folks don't have any facts, right? You know, I'm not comfortable with that premise being put forth, that, you know, these folks don't know what they're talking about all of a sudden. But I do see that there may be some differences, or some clarity that you all may have had through these discussions, or that, certainly I hear from a lot of the conversations, and my initial conversation or, or concern was about what can be done, and what's outside of the scope of the, the actual lawsuit.
Right.
And I appreciate what Charlie was putting forth about, where do we go from here?
Right.
Is the consortium going to all of a sudden walk away and leave WATCH and others on their own to go to clean up this, this mess? So I think that there's, it's, it's, it's a good thing for us to move forward with these discussions, to have them, like we're having now. I'm gonna motion that we defer this into our September 21st meeting after the 19th. So that's the motion that I'm putting on the floor.
Okay, there's a motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Mr. Jacobson?
Yeah.
Oh, it's just a deferral? Okay, so we don't debate it?
We don't debate it? Oh, okay.
Okay. So there's no vote? Is, is a fait accompli?
A fait accompli!
And to what date is it deferred?
The 21st. All right, so we will revisit this on the 21st. That is September 21st. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Manigan, would you like to continue at item D?
Well, yeah, just for the record, item C was, was held over until the next committee of the whole.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, I cannot continue with D, E, or F. State law precludes me from participating, therefore I shall recuse myself and ask one of my colleagues to take over the meeting.
Okay, I can do that?
Okay, Diane?
Ordinance number 2015-08-092, which is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increases the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for SOILL restaurant systems doing business as dotties, 1901 South Phila Road. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe? That motion carries.
That was a strong, no, Bill.
He's getting tougher.
Only counts for what?
Ordinance number 2015-08-093, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the numbers of Class G1 liquor licenses for A+ entertainment doing business as A+ VIP lounge, 214 West Main Street. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2015-08-094, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of- 3-43, increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses for Upscale Entertainment Group LLC doing business as Flight Ultra Lounge, 142 Lincoln Square, Suite 138. For the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Mr. Madigan, thank you.
All right, Agenda Item G, ordinance number 2015-08-095, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1306 and 1/2 West Dublin Street. The committee recommended approval of the ordinance, and on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Mr. Ammons?
Can we combine all three of these?
No, it's more trouble than it's worth. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries.
The committee recommended approval of ordinance number 2015-08-096, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 5 Hill Street Court. And on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Mr. Brown?
I just have a procedural question. I thought we had a public hearing on this last time, and then we had another one this week. Was there some?
I think it was just this week, but I could hear on.
Just this week. Okay.
Is that correct?
I thought, I thought for some reason we thought we didn't need one for this one, maybe? Okay, but we had one just to be safe.
And nobody cared.
Okay, just checking. Thanks.
Yeah, the other one was our property. All right, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries.
Agenda item I, the committee moved to recommend approval of ordinance number 2015-08-097, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 1310 West Hill Street. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to reports of special committees. Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I'm saying that the, I'm just really re- announcing the fact that the Urbana Sister Cities Committee and its, and the Sister City Program here is going to be hosting a delegation from Toulonville, France. They're going to arrive tomorrow evening here in town, and they're going to be with us for several days. We're going to be touring the school districts, visiting departments in the city building, taking them on tour of the university, and generally through the downtown and areas within Urbana. One of the places that the city is making available a general time to meet and discover who these people are is a, an event that's going to be at the Urbana Free Library on Friday, September 11th, between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock. And we, you may have seen a poster in the downtown or posters of the library. It invites anybody who's interested in meeting the French delegation to come and visit with them during that hour of time at the library. Light refreshments will be available, and it's a great time to discover the interest that can occur when you talk to somebody from another country or culture and discover that they're just as fun as you are.
What was the time again?
What time? Is that 3:00?
It's Friday, September 11th, coming up in the public library on the first floor, McFarland Hood Reading Room, and it's between 2:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon.
And I would like to report on the visit from our Chinese Sister City. We took them to King School and got a wonderful tour from the principal. And they were so impressed and so delighted by that school that it was, it was really wonderful to see. They were very surprised that children got to go to the school without having to pay tuition. I explained later about property taxes, but they thought we have, well, we do have free education for children when they go to the school, but there's, we have to pay for it ultimately. They really enjoyed going to Meadowbrook Park, and we really had a very happy group of Chinese visitors, so that was a lot of fun. Okay, Bill, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just imagine most people have heard, but Mary Ellen Farrell, member of our library board, passed away last week after her struggle with brain cancer. She was a member of the board for more than 20 years, serving as president for quite a few of those years. She's also a familiar face in the community. After her retirement at the U of I, she was seen at the Food Co-op often, and I'm sure a lot of people know her and appreciate her, her attitude and her contribution to life in Urbana, and she'll be sorely missed, but I just wanted to make sure that we appreciate her service.
Thank you. We'll move on, reports of officers. Libby Tyler, Community Development.
I'd like to introduce some folks to council tonight, introducing two new members of our Economic Development Division. And on the right is Miles Thomas. You've met Miles before. He's been working with us for over years, an intern as an economic developer, or Community and Economic Development Associate. Now, he's an Economic Development Specialist. So, welcome to Miles. And next to Miles is Libby Horwitz. We felt we just needed another Libby in the department, and we needed another Elizabeth in the city, so we searched far and wide, and we found Libby in Philadelphia. And she's relocated here from Philadelphia and has a background working for other economic development agencies and also served in the Peace Corps. And so, I'd like to welcome Libby Horwitz and Miles Thomas, both Economic Development Specialists for the city. So, that council goals, those long lists of goals, a lot of them have to do with TIF districts and economic development and running programs like Enterprise Zone. These are the folks who will be helping with that. And I know that tonight Miles has our monthly ED report to present.
I am happy to report lots of development and new businesses opening. I'm just going to touch on a few items from the ED report, just to keep this a little short. I did want you all to know that Main Street Plaza, also known as 123 West Main Street, is getting two new tenants. One will be replacing Air Records, who was the former multiple leaseholder. So, it's CU, S-E-E-Y-O-U, CD and Vinyl will be replacing Air Records with a wider genre selection. And they will also be adding Champagne Urbana Adventures in Time and Space, which is a tech venture where friends in small teams use observation and critical thinking to solve a series of puzzles. Sounds like it's going to be a pretty cool little space in there. Other Main Street items, facade construction is complete at Air Urbana, and I'm sure you all have seen the shipping containers that have been delivered.
Can I ask a question on that one?
Sure.
Yeah, who ultimately approved the facade?
I believe the facade was approved by Building Safety, but they're still in discussions about the, completing the project before they open.
So, it didn't go to any public review process or anything?
Not that I'm aware of. Libby, do you have any other?
No, that's correct. We don't have extra design reviews. A lot of our buildings are reviewed administratively. You just see special things, like tonight with the CU at Home, rezoning, special use permits. As you know, design review covers three small areas in Urbana, along Green Street and Elm Street, along Lincoln and Bucie, and parts of historic East Urbana.
So, there's no, there's no way of communicating with the developer concerning or even reviewing the design before it's approved by the administrator?
No, the designs need to meet code. It's a very long, arduous process sometimes that they need to be reviewed and they need to meet code. That's correct. And zoning and all of our other development reviews, we have, development review happens on a daily basis, and it's a multi-departmental process. So, it's certainly not something that is taken lightly.
Bill?
Just to follow up on that, I think in our TIF agreement, we specified a minimum amount that they were required to spend on the facade. Do you know if they met that amount?
Yes, we did investigate, but I don't have numbers right handy.
Yeah, we just.
But as Miles mentioned, we are still finaling up that project.
Yeah. As the project progresses, they've been approving the various expenditures to receive payment on the agreement. So, we're going through those as, as they are performed to make sure that the minimum is met. So, that development agreement will dictate how those checks are delivered. Is there any other questions on the Air Urbana facade?
Sure, on that same project, the gravel inside, does that have to be ADA compliant? If so, is it?
I believe that is the question that's been posed to Building Safety right now, and they'll be discussing that and finding what is most suitable for ADA compliance.
Dennis?
And on the same project, concerning the gravel, if that's a place that food is being served, what are the health regulations concerning the floor and cleaning it and overseeing a healthy safety environment?
All of that is defined by the CU Health District, but as we've been told in the, in the plans for the space, there will be no glass or breakable materials that will be utilized in the space.
What about organic food dropping into the cracks? And what's the situation of that dirt accumulating?
Other than CU health standards, I'm not sure what the procedure is for their timeliness and taking care of organic waste.
Yeah, it's, they are working through public health for the food handling. It's like a seasonal use, just like Sweet Corn Festival or food truck rally, so it's not like a restaurant. But we do have building safety review on the interior of the space. And I think, you know, these are good comments on the accessibility and the outline. We are waiting for the site plan for the layout to make sure that it's accessible. But it is an open-air, seasonal type of use, so it's a little bit different than, a lot bit different from a restaurant.
Any other questions for Air Urbana? Okay. The other work that's been going on in Main Street, you all just read about A+ VIP Lounge. Work is nearing completion. They've actually had a final inspection on the karaoke lounge upstairs. And work is also nearing completion on heel-to-toes expansion into their space at 108 and 1/2 West Main Street. Philo Road, we just had a new business opening. Studio Vida has a 24-hour fitness studio that's card access, and they very quickly moved into that space, and it's a nice addition to that block. We have, for Urbana Public Arts, two new artworks have been installed. These are the images you see on your screen here. This first image is Aarle's Morning by Phil Strong and was installed at the UBA just a few days ago, and we held a reception with the artist who's pictured here. And Nathan Westerman's slat paintings were installed at the Urbana Civic Center, and we also had a, a opening event with the artist, Nathan Westerman, who is pictured here. For other ED and marketing news, CD staff, Economic Development Division staff, assisted the Urbana Fire Department distributing welcoming materials at the UIUC Dorm Move-In Day. And we recently held our, what we thought was going to be the final food truck rally. All of the food truck vendors that came to our previous food truck rally expressed interest in continuing. They, they felt that they received an equal amount of sales as their previous, as the previous food truck rallies. So, we've also extended that to the last Tuesday in September and October. I missed my note here on the Art Expo, but September 13th, this coming Sunday, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., will be featuring 23 local artists at our Art Expo at the Civic Center. And, let's see. City staff attended the unveiling of U of I Willard Airport's new branding campaign, which is prominently featuring both Champagne and Urbana in their marketing materials. And they're slowly making their way towards opening their new website, iflycu.com. City staff in the, well, ED Division staff held the third of our four annual development luncheons, this focused on green building in Urbana and Champagne. We had Sue Dawson from Hendrick House, which you see pictured here. This is the rooftop garden that they use for their facility. They recently achieved Lead Gold certification, and this and the other projects, Scott Baer, his passive house on Washington Street in Urbana, and Scott Tess's Energy Star Certification Guidelines, were all covered heavily by Smile Politely, and we were featured in an article recently on Smile Politely's website for our developers' luncheon. And finally, the UBA had a lot to say about the 40th Annual Urbana Sweet Corn Festival. This year, we had the Psychedelic Furs, The Church, and Berlin. We had a little bit of poor weather on Saturday, although most of the event was very nice. We had nearly 80 different vendors in the various spaces throughout downtown, and this year, we actually ran out of 20,000 ears of corn slightly earlier than expected. So, there was, every corn buck was used. Pending any other questions, that's all I have for you tonight.
Eric?
So, maybe I'll say something as the council representative to the Public Arts Commission.
Sure.
The, so, there's a terrific website for the Art Expo, urbanaartexpo.com.
That's correct. Thank you.
Which is just fabulous. I mean, there are reproductions of some of the works, there's background webpages on each of the artists, and it's really a terrific job. But the other thing that I'd like to mention is that we have, you know, we're getting reports from the grants we made last year, and one of the really interesting things is that a couple of the projects involve performances in, in the mall, in Lincoln Center, Lincoln Square Mall. And actually, the Dr. G's Brain Shop was collaborating and getting those set up and so forth. And they were very, very successful, but they did something really interesting, which is they, you know, attracted people who were, you know, who were there. And one of the ideas that came out of today's meeting of the Public Arts Commission is that maybe we ought to think seriously about trying to get some continual or very frequent arts presence in the mall as a way of attracting people to the mall. So, I think that you're going to get some, something from our, you'll get some, some contact from our, from our art staff person. And we're aware that there are some issues with it because of the management of the mall, but, but, but hopefully that, hopefully they could come to see that this is really in their interest. And so, I'm kind of, so I think things are, you know, I think, I think that maybe we can combine arts with economic development. combine arts with economic development.
On that note, Dr. G's Bram Works, there's a small note about them expanding in the ED report. But after their recent opening of a new store in Decatur, Illinois, they have come back to refocus on their main store in Lincoln Square. They took on another space at Lincoln Square next, where the former beauty salon was located. And they are doing an innovation lab for tutoring young children and engaging them with the arts puzzles and performing arts. So we have a great tenant there that is readily expanding.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other reports of officers? Let's move on to new business. The first is ordinance number 2015-09-098, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow a garage that will encroach 13 feet, six inches into the, into the required front yard in the R3 single-family and two-family residential district at 701 East Elm Street.
Yes. Greetings.
Kevin?
So I will, I'll try and keep this as brief as I can while hitting all the, all the points that need to be hit. So this is a request to construct a garage that may encroach up to 13 feet, six inches into the required 19-foot front yard at 701 East Elm Street. This property is on the southeast corner of Elm Street and Anderson Street. And being a corner lot, the zoning ordinance says that it has two front yards. So it has one on Elm Street and one on Anderson Street. The applicant would like to build a garage and a breezeway behind her house on the west side of the lot, which would encroach into the required front yard along Anderson Street. And would, it would extend an additional 12 feet beyond the edge of the house. And the breezeway would be directly in line with the house. The applicant would like to maintain the usable space behind her house and to allow for convenient access to the house, especially during winter months. And that's why she's requesting this variance. There are also four city-owned trees in the public right-of-way to the west of the property. The northern two trees are well-established black walnuts of high value. And the proposed garage would be built, or sorry, the approach to the garage would be built between those two walnut trees. The excavation for the driveway and the garage footing might damage the root systems of the trees, which would then reduce the health of the trees. And due to the potential for damage, the city arborist recommends that the applicant pay a fee to the city in advance of construction for, for that potential damage. On August 19th, the zoning board of appeals heard the case and voted seven to zero to forward the case to city council with a recommendation for approval. So really, the, the two main issues with respect to this case are first, the variance itself, and then second are the possible impacts on the two city trees. So first, with respect to the variance, the applicant has provided a very thorough description of different potential site plans that she considered prior to, to making her request for variance. And she considered and rejected several site plans that would conform to the zoning ordinance, but really to meet her goals of preserving the views of the backyard from the house and building the garage close, close enough to provide convenient access. She feels that her current proposal is the only one that would, that would work. And given the narrowness of the lot and the requirement for a 19-foot front yard setback, it doesn't appear that other site plans would meet the applicant's desires. If you look at the surrounding neighborhood, there are at least 24 out of 47 corner lots, so over 50% of other corner lots zoned R3 in the neighborhood that appear to have buildings that encroach into the required front yard setback. And five of those appear to have garages that encroach into the, into the front yard setback. So we don't feel that the request would be out of character for the neighborhood. With respect to the impact on the city trees, the applicant has scaled back her original plans and she has been really active working with city staff, CD staff and our city arborist to address our concerns. The city arborist has estimated that 30% of each tree's root systems could be affected by the, by the driveway and the garage footing. And in order to mitigate the damage suggests that the applicant compensate the city for 30% of the value of, of the trees, which comes out to $3,417, which the applicant has agreed to pay. We feel that the applicant, that the application meets the five variance criteria as outlined in your memo, starting on page four and five. If you're interested, I can explain any of those in greater detail. So with respect to this case, the city council can approve the variance request. You can approve the variance request with certain terms and conditions, or you can deny the variance request. As I mentioned, the zoning board of appeals voted seven to zero to recommend approval for the variance with two conditions. Those are on page six of your memo, and those are that the site plan is developed in general compliance with the attached site plan entitled Proposed Site Plan, and that the applicant agrees to compensate the city $3,417 for the effects of the construction of the driveway and garage on the health of adjacent city trees. And the applicant agrees to submit payment prior to issuance of any permits for construction of either the driveway or garage. Staff concurs with the ZBA recommendation. That concludes my report. I can answer questions. I know the applicant is here to answer any questions that you may have as well. Thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Kevin. I think my, I do have like a little bit of interest in this. It's in my neighborhood. And actually, I run past this house a lot in the morning. And, you know, so I, when this came up, I had sign, I'd seen the sign that there was gonna be a variance request, and it was about a garage. And I didn't really track it. I didn't track it through the planning commission. I'm, I got lots to do and I just didn't track this particular case. And, but I looked at it more carefully in the last two days, and I've just got a couple things to offer. First of all, I don't have a problem with a garage being built near the lot line of this house and having a breezeway connected. It's not, it's not anything that would be an unusual thing to see in the community. I was sort of amazed and very interested in how, how much the arborist valued the walnut trees. And there's also the, the situation where this house is really on a pretty kind of a high rise in the, in the area. It's up on a hill and there's about a three-foot at least grade from the street level to the sidewalk. So, so I had a couple of thoughts. And actually, I want to give this piece of paper to the applicant.
I've already given her.
Well, you did.
Yeah, I gave her a copy.
Very good. All right. So, so one of the problems is that we're gonna destroy, by placing the drive entrance where it's proposed, and there actually are little red flags on the embankment where this would be, we're gonna be cutting down, I guess we're gonna have to be grading down to allow the slope for the driveway to, I don't know, enter the, enter the yard in such a way that it's not, you know, I don't know how abrupt the climb's gonna be. If the, if the grade for the driveway has to meet the lip of the sidewalk as it exists and then level out into the yard, is that correct?
I'm not sure. I'm not a driveway expert, so.
Okay. So I guess what I was wondering is, one of the trees is behind the sidewalk, but apparently not on the property line. Is that correct?
Correct.
The northernmost tree. All right. So that's the tree that's really gonna suffer because it's gonna have to be excavated down to get the driveway and the footings of the garage in. So I looked at the situation, and the tree immediately south of the second walnut tree, which we're trying to save two trees here, and when you cut 30% of somebody's roots, you're basically gonna kill two trees. And we've seen this on Main Street where they, they built the straw bale house and they disrupted the root system of a pine tree that was, had been growing there for 100 years. And over three years, that tree died. And, you know, and it wasn't that close to the construction site. So I'm gonna estimate that probably within three years, these two walnut trees will be dead. So meanwhile, the third tree down is a tree that's, it's an oak tree, and it's already suffering. And you can see, I included in, in the images here, leaf damage or bareness, it looks like basically that just die off on the tree. If there's gonna be a tree to be considered for removal, that's the tree to take down. That tree is already stressed and on the way out. And if you remove that tree, that would provide you with a very clear pathway to put a driveway into the yard, just a little bit south of where the proposed area is, maybe 12 feet south, we would save two trees. And if the drive, if the garage was, opening of the garage was facing south, the cars could easily enter the garage. And so I'm just offering that this is a possible solution that maybe wasn't provided or discussed during the plan commission meeting, but might actually solve a lot of issues. For the $3,500 that the property owner would save by not having to pay a fee to the city for the potential death of trees, I bet you could probably lay an extra 20 feet of pavement to enter the garage at a different angle. And I'm just offering this as a solution, which I would rather prefer to see than to approve the plan as shown.
I was hoping to get the petitioner up here to join the discussion here and get her reaction to this idea. And along with it, a couple of questions I want to throw out there as, you know, if, if, if this is a scenario that we can work with, would the city take down the oak tree for free? And that would be a question for Public Works. I mean, is it, is it a tree that Mike Brunk thinks is gonna die anyway, or?
I think he likes to take down trees that have that show stress and disease.
It's a red oak, or?
It's some kind of oak.
So that, that would be something we'd need to find out, you know, if it's.
It's a tree on the way out.
If it's a tree on the way out, we would take it down anyway for, probably for free. So you would save that money. And then I would, I would imagine you'd want to run this by your architects or whatever as well and think about it. And, and we can hold this for committee. But, you know, in general, I have no problem with this, with this project moving forward. I think, as Dennis said, but here's an alternative that might save you money.
So I'll address both, both of those, both of those issues. So in initial discussions, when I initially went out there with Mike, he did say that the, the two southernmost trees, so that oak, and then there's another one further south, he said he wouldn't have any problem with those being removed at no cost. But we did discuss that with the applicant, and I think she could probably explain better why, why that solution wouldn't work. It was a consideration that, that didn't make it into, into the application.
So actually, first of all, I have to strongly disagree with the notion that within three years, those trees will be dead. And the reason for that is because Mike Brunk came out and we spent about an hour at the property looking at all the options and discussing the realities of the trees. And those trees have been there quite some time. As he pointed out, I have roots going well over into most of my neighbors at this point. And so when he came up with the 30% and the value that he's asking me to pay to the city, it was based on his interpretation, and I have to defer to the city arborist as being the expert on this, that with the potential for root damage, taking into account the grading and all of that, with the potential, they, it might damage up to 30% of the roots. And he would expect some dieback from the trees. He definitely did not anticipate that the trees are going to be dead and have to be removed. In fact, what we talked about at one point is the one that is larger and what appears to be the more valuable, well, it certainly is the more valuable when you just look at the dollars, is the one on the north. The problem with that one is that it also is the one that's extending over my house. So when that branch comes down, and walnuts tend to drop branches just because of weight. So there's one already that hangs down quite a bit in the yard and one that's over the house. So we had discussed at one point, between the two trees, if we have to sacrifice one, which one would be the one to sacrifice? The one on the north would be the one to sacrifice. The one to the south isn't as attractive, but we think it's stunted because of the much larger one on the north. But the other thing he pointed out, because he had considered something very similar to this, which would be, because my goal is to also maintain as much of my backyard. And with this, and trust me, I love the idea about not having to pay the fee because of the walnut trees. But at the same time, with this, because of coming in, a few things occur to me. I'm going to end up paving a great deal of my backyard that I wouldn't have paved right now. So that would be landscaped area. The other thing is, when I'm coming and going from my garage, I would have to make a 90-degree turn to go in and also to back out. My backyard is fenced, and if I'm going to have it fenced, then I'm gonna have to run a fence along that driveway as well. So I'm gonna end up adding another barrier to myself when I'm trying to back out. But the big thing is, what he had considered was if I came in somewhere towards the back there and to try to maintain the yard initially, and he told me, I was, I'm just trying to throw out any ideas here, he talked about doing a lengthwise garage. And then we both quickly realized that's not gonna work well, because then I have to park the cars in this way. But the bigger issue is, one of the things that he's looking at in terms of the risk to those two walnuts is the amount of pavement. So with this proposal, if you look at the second page, that this dot right here is the south walnut, and that's the one that we think long-term we would want to protect the most. And so you have a street on the west side, and then we would be running a driveway on the south side, driveway and garage on the east side. So at that point, we would be cutting off most of its root system, because you end up going around it. And his concern is not just the depth for the grade, but also the amount of surface that gets covered with pavement. So we're dramatically increasing the amount of pavement by doing that versus just the straight shot. So that was sort of, the main reasons against that would be adding, actually not adding, taking away a lot more of my backyard to have a driveway that's paralleling what is now the property line and the fence. But also, I really think that proposal, even though it's down a little bit, still puts it between that, where the oak tree is, because there's also a light post there. So I'm rather landlocked between this walnut and that light post. So to go between there, it's still gonna be close enough to that one walnut tree that I'm, from this, it looks like we're almost ringing that tree, much more so than a straight shot between the two.
I want to ask you about the walnut trees. I did get a complaint from one Urbana resident that she has a walnut tree that's brought a lot of squirrels. So do you have a huge quantity of squirrels?
I put out bird feed for my squirrels.
Are they chewing up your house?
I've got, yes. In fact, I've got a front porch that's wood that is just shredded, so at some point, that's gotta be replaced. I have routinely six to eight squirrels in my front yard. They're fun to watch. They tear up a lot of things. They also bury walnuts everywhere, so they dig everything up and leave walnuts behind.
So you'll have more walnut trees?
So it's, it's those two walnut trees. And I'll tell you, I, I love the fact that these trees are so old, and I appreciate the history and, and the value that they add. But it's a real love-hate relationship, because they are one of the messiest, most disgusting trees on the planet. They really are. Track that stuff in all the time and stuff. So, yeah, it's, they're messy trees. But these trees are very old. The other thing is that Mike Brunk also is not sure. He tried to look at the base of the trees, and the sidewalk for the one to the south is actually, that tree has grown significantly since the sidewalk went in, so it's actually kind of bulging over the edge of the sidewalk. But what he can't tell at this point is how deep down the roots go. So one of the advantages, because the trees are, and you were talking about how it is a hill like that. And so one of the advantages is with the trees being on the lower part, the roots are gonna tend to go down more. So we're really not sure until we do that excavation, how much is gonna be damaged. And he said if the soil is more of a loose loam, those roots may be very deep and we may not damage that much. And it's, it's amazing soil that I've got there. So I'm optimistic that that's gonna be the case.
Okay. Any other questions?
Oh, there's others.
Bill Brown and then Charlie?
Yeah. So the existing driveway would still be used for parking your extra car, is that right?
Yeah. Right now, I've downsized the garage, and I'm hoping that I can have it wide enough that I might be able to scrunch two cars very closely in there. I only use it one at one time. But if not, then that other side would just have a car parked there.
Okay. And do we have any rules against having two access points to a single, or, yeah, to a single-family house?
No.
Okay. And, I mean, Mike, man can. And, I mean, my main concern really would be that it would encourage somebody to park over the sidewalk, because if your garage door isn't open, you might be tempted just to park there and run in and get something, and then, and then, you know, be on your way or whatever. And that, you can get ticketed for that, so that's, that's, that's the remedy, I guess, but people sometimes don't appreciate the fact that there are occasionally blind people in the neighborhood that are used to being able to use the sidewalk without, without obstructions, so that can really be a major hazard for something like that. So just wanted to mention that, that that would be a main concern. I think that was my only question. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Charlie.
I was asking about the gravel drive, so I'm, I was hoping it would go away. I, I guess I'm a little puzzled, you wouldn't flare out the driveway a little bit so that you could pull two cars in and out? Because if you flared the, I assume you'd flare the driveway.
Yeah, it's really a matter of, my original plan, that when I talked to a couple of different garage builders, they were, of course, everyone's going, oh, you gotta go twenty-four by twenty-four. That's a lot of my backyard. And the thing is, if I would have it the twenty-four feet wide, then it ends up going past that other walnut tree a little bit more, and I knew that would jeopardize more of the roots, so I downscaled it back. But yeah, my hope would be that when we get up to the top, that it can flare out a little bit so that I can maybe get the two vehicles jockeyed in there. They're not really big vehicles, but I, I don't know for sure, but that was one of the concessions I was willing to make to try to minimize the damage to the walnuts.
I guess I would encourage you to get rid of the gravel driveway if you find you can park two cars there.
Yeah, and if so, I would love to get rid of the gravel driveway.
Okay, Dennis.
So, so is the gravel driveway that's on the side of the house acceptable as a parking area for a residential unit?
Yeah, that's correct. If it existed before nineteen ninety, September something nineteen ninety, we allow those to be maintained.
Okay, so then it's, it's not an option to put a permeable pavement driveway in, and that therefore allow water to soak through and water the roots of the second walnut tree?
That would be an option. It's not something that we require for, in our zoning ordinance. It would certainly be an option, though.
And, so when the, when the drive reaches the edge of the city sidewalk, then it doesn't matter how steep the drive is, as long as it reaches the street, right?
Again, I'm, I'm not an expert on driveways, so I'm not sure what, what an acceptable grade would be.
And so the city arborist was willing to cut down a healthy and mature walnut tree, but not a diseased oak tree? That was his recommendation.
No, his, he was willing to accept some level of potential damage in exchange for compensation for the walnut trees.
And again, I'm, I'm pointing out this, the pine tree that was on, in front of the house on Main Street at six oh five, and it was a healthy tree until the house was built, and the house is built about twenty feet behind the tree, and within three years, yes, the top started dying away, and the tree's removed today. It doesn't even exist today. So I don't think that just, we're not, I think that we're talking about serious damage to a tree that could be avoided by just a little bit of extra thought.
Okay, we have an ordinance. Is there a motion?
I move passage of the ordinance.
Second. Motion by Jacobson, seconded by Marlin. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have appointments to boards and commissions. Civilian Police Review Board, I'm recommending Grace Mitchell. Property Maintenance Code of Board, Code Board of Appeals, Keith Erickson. MOR Development Review Board, Jonah Weiskopf. And reappointments to boards and commissions, we have had two fantastic people representing us on UC2B, Charlie Smythe and Pete Resnick. I move approval of all of the above.
Correction here first, please. The, the dates are backwards for me and Pete. They should be, and, and Pete, it's twenty eighteen for me and twenty seventeen for Pete, not twenty-one oh eight. He does not intend to serve till twenty-one oh eight.
Oh, well, it actually, on the ordinance, it says twenty eighteen.
Yeah, well, I should be twenty eighteen, and Pete should be twenty seventeen, sorry.
Okay, we'll take your word for it. Okay, so we have a motion by Marlin, and who, who did this second?
I just heard objections.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Marlin, seconded by Eric, Eric Jacobson, with the correction on the dates for UC2B. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.